Good morning, everyone. Today is August 17th, 2022. The time is 9:35 a.m. I'm Teresa Mosqueta, Chair of the Finance and Housing Committee. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Herbold.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Madam Chair Mosqueta.
Present.
Madam Chair, that is five present, non-absent.
Okay, wonderful. Well, good morning, everyone. Thanks again for joining us. Happy to have all of you here with us today. We do have a full agenda. Colleagues, in front of us today, we have the three bills related to cannabis equity for briefing discussion and possible vote. Want to pause to make sure that we don't have any background noise. Everything going well on the projection Seattle channel? Looks like we have a little bit of background. Okay, I'll try that again. We have on our agenda today, three bills related to cannabis equity legislation for briefing discussion and possible vote. Thanks to all the colleagues who have submitted their amendments and have worked with central staff to include those in the publication for today's material. As I noted to my colleagues, we will have at least one walk-on amendment, thanks to Councilmember Nelson, in partnership with me and on our office, who will have a joint walk-on amendment for your consideration as well. We will then have at least three items related to our budgeting and forecasting. We'll have an economic and revenue forecast, August update. This is a presentation from last Monday's Office of Economic and Revenue Forecast Projections that was presented to the Forecast Council. We'll have a general fund finance, financial plan update from central staff, and we'll have a quarterly Seattle Rescue Plan spending update if we have time, time permitting. I want to thank in advance the folks from the city's Budgets Office, Economic Revenue Forecast Office, and our own central staff for the incredible work that they've done on these items. I will note that there is an additional two materials that are linked under meeting details on today's Finance and Housing Committee materials. These are related to Agenda Item Number Five, and unfortunately, we're inadvertently left off of today's materials in the agenda. So you can find the link to both a central staff memo and a PowerPoint presentation for Agenda Item Number Five, linked under Meeting Details. And for colleagues on the committee, you have also received an email from our office to link you directly to those materials. So it's a packed agenda. We did ask if folks could please hold the time until 12:30 today to get through all these items. If there's no objection, today's agenda will be adopted. There is no objection, today's agenda is adopted. Colleagues, I want to thank you again for continuing to participate as much as possible remotely, and to members of the public as well for continuing to wear a mask if you are in public, and to all of those who continue to call in via remote public comment. We do encourage people to call in remotely to limit the number of people who are in the chambers, as we are also asking all the presenters from central staff, the mayor's office, community partners, who would normally be at the table with us, to also participate remotely. So thank you for continuing to do that as we seek to try to bring down these COVID rates even further. Madam Clerk, will you please tee up the public comment? And we'll head right into public comment. Yeah. Okay, if the video is not available, I'll go ahead and read the script. Okay, I'll read the script. Colleagues, we do have folks who signed up remotely and in chambers. We will have the folks who signed up remotely to present first. There's about five people present to present remotely. And we have a handful of people in the audience as well, about eight individuals who have signed up to provide public testimony. As a reminder, you will have one and a half minutes to provide your public comment. That will allow for us to get through the full public comment and get to the items on the agenda today. You will hear a chime at 10 seconds, or you have 10 seconds remaining. Please do wrap up your comments, and if you have any additional comments, you are welcome to send those into council@seattle.gov. That's council@seattle.gov. Okay, wonderful. So let's go ahead and get started with the three folks who are listed first to sign up for public comment online. That's Adan Espinoza Jr., Cody Fundabunk, and Zion Grayill. Good morning, Adan. Just star six to unmute yourself and make sure your own phone is off mute too.
Yes, I believe so. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Chair Mosqueta and committee members. I am Aiden Espino Jr., the Executive Director of the Craft Cannabis Coalition and Association of Family-Owned Cannabis Retailers, including over half of retailers in Seattle. I would like to provide comments regarding continued concerns we have on proposed amendment language to the Cannabis Needs Assessment. The criteria continues to be very specific when directing the executive towards selecting an organization with close ties to UFCW, a stakeholder in the process. That organization being We Train Washington, and the connection being that the president of UFCW 3000 is also the president of We Train Washington. We have asked if there are any other credible nonprofit entities that the criteria has written, and so far, no one has been able to offer up any. We appreciate language putting a college at the helm, but they still have to partner with an organization like We Train Washington. This is a significant enough issue that it could potentially make it difficult, if not impossible, for the CCC and its members to participate in the needs assessment going forward. The CCC supports a fair and neutral assessment to identify real and pressing social equity needs, but putting a stakeholder into a controlling role would not be bad. We hope you will agree that giving one stakeholder more control of the process or greater representation within it would be inappropriate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cody Fundabunk, followed by Zion Grayill. Good morning, Cody. Star six, send mute.
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Cody Fundabunk. I've worked in the Central District as a bartender and medical cannabis consultant for Ponder since 2018. I'm calling today in support of the proposed amendments by Councilmember Teresa Mosqueta. As an industry worker, I can't understate the importance of having high standards for conducting cannabis needs assessments to the benefit of limiting bias. If these assessments are conducted by a nonprofit entity with expertise in training and development, we can better assure accuracy and impartiality, which will benefit the overall intent of the proposal that we have here. In addition to that, I feel that the Advisory Committee would be better served by the presence of representatives of labor who stand to leverage the interests of cannabis workers beside owners. I'm also calling in support of the proposed amendments to Section Three. I think it's crucial that expungement involves the collaborative efforts of those with lived experience in the criminal justice system. However subtle, these nuances do have dramatic effects on the intent of the proposed amendment. Explicitly naming and including labor rights, communities negatively affected by the war on drugs, and those with lived experience in the criminal justice system actively defines intentional elements of inclusion and justice within this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then next person is Zion Grayill, followed by James Adams and Paula Sardinas. Good morning, Zion.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Zion Grayill, and I just wanted, I want to say good morning first off to Chairman Mosqueta and the committee members. I've spoken at these meetings a couple times in the past. Again, I'm here to support the legislation. I also voice my support for Councilwoman Mosqueta's proposed amendment. I fully support Cody's statement that was just made earlier, especially in regards to having the specific groups involved in the work. I also would like to acknowledge the Freedom Project for being on the forefront of this expungement initiative. I think We Train Washington is an absolutely amazing organization and would be ideal, regardless of their association, their capabilities, and what is they can provide, to the vision is pivotal, in my opinion. I agree that it's very important to appoint workers, industry members, and key community members to support the Cannabis Needs Assessment. I believe Ms. Nelson's amendment proposal was, in my opinion, too owner investor specific in regards to its composition, and I personally feel that there are other groups that are involved in the cannabis community that will lose the opportunity to be considered under Ms. Nelson's specific proposal. Again, I'd really like to be on this advisory committee that will help do the research and provide assessment and analysis on this ordinance. And I just want to end it by saying the legislation is off to a good start. You heard me advocating for cannabis. I'm going to keep doing it, and we have a lot of work ahead of us. I'm confident that we can get it done.
Thank you so much. Thanks. James, followed by Paulina Sardinas, and I want to know Gabrielle Prowl is listed to speak but not present. Gabrielle, you can still call in. James, good morning. Star six, send mute.
Good morning. Thank you so much for letting me talk here today. My name is James Adams, and I am a lead bartender at Mr. Green's Cannabis in North Seattle and a union steward for UFCW 3000, and I strongly support the workers' protection piece. When Mr. Green broke off from its parent company, a few of us employees were fired. Majority of us were retained by the company. It was extremely stressful because we all felt like we were on the chopping block and we were very replaceable and treated as such. We need to protect cannabis workers' rights. Businesses are bought and sold regularly, and the workers have little to no rights when that happens, and we are replaced. This act would protect workers when a business is sold and make it so that the new owner can't fire and replace the workers that built the company beforehand. Cannabis is still federally legal. Workers in the industry have little rights and are exploited on daily basis, and I think that these amendments would have great effect on the workers in the city of Seattle.
Thank you very much for dialing in. Last person who's present online is Paula Sardinas. And Gabrielle, if you're still listening, you are eligible to dial in. Good morning, Paula.
Good morning. My name is Paula Sardinas. I'm the President and CEO of FMS Global Strategies, the founder of the Washington Build That Black Alliance, and we support 714 African-Americans left out of I-502. We passed Cannabis Banking Bill, Senate Bill 5928. We were the drafters of Senate of House Bill 2870, creating the social equity program, and worked on HP 1443. We are the largest, most unified voice representing African-Americans in the BIPOC community in cannabis, and we do not support certain provisions of this amendment. We support worker protections and commend Chair Mosqueta and the City of Seattle for having the strongest worker protections probably in the state or the country. We are in support of the amendment put forward by Sarah Nelson simply because we understand this issue, having defeated House Bill 2361 and Senate Bill 6393 that UFC brought on the state level. And talking to members of the community, we cannot build this program on the backs of social equity applicants. We think that there is a better way to do this. If we move forward with a needs assessment, we have worked on black banking, state banking, and social equity issues with UW, WSU, and the state universities. They are well qualified to do this work. They are nonpartisan and will bring a lens of equity to the work. I think having a provision in an amendment funded by taxpayer dollars that gives money to a particular entity is neither equity or equality. Thank you.
Thank you, and I still don't see Gabrielle listed as present. So we're going to move on to folks in the room. Good morning, Marguerite Rashad, Peter Manning, and Sikani Perkins. Good morning, Marguerite.
Yes, good morning. My name is Marguerite Rashad, and I'm from Seattle. And my concern here, I circled it, it's called an ordinance relating to employment in Seattle. That's deep, because when you talk about the indigenous population, black, indigenous black people, homeless out on the street in the drone man or whatever his name is, homeless authority man is coming up in here on the day. You know, this stuff is not a joke. It never has been funny, and I don't know what this means when you're relating to employment when a lot of people are unemployed. I mean deliberate actions to keep them unemployed. I know folks that lost their home here in Seattle for no reason at all. They was just indigenous black people, and somebody came out the woodworks to assault them and take everything from them and make them crippled. And so I want the payment right now. I'm not waiting for Congress to wait for nothing, no. We just gonna do that, because we true to that. That's what we're gonna do. We're gonna demand what we need to make our people survive in this country right now, not tomorrow, but now. Bye.
All right, guys, we're gonna ask folks to hold their applause. You can do this if you agree. But please, please, yeah, exactly. We gotta keep going.
You know, the sister says something very powerful, man. Kind of, I get moved when I hear reparations, and that's accountability. I mean, that's what we really need in this country is reparations, I believe. Right, guys?
You can go ahead and start your time again. And good morning, Mr. Peter Manning.
Hi, my name is Peter Manning. I'm with Black Excellence in Cannabis. We at Black Excellence in Cannabis, we are opposed to certain things with unions and this uncertainty, how that's all going to play out, the nonprofit organizations. We're not really feeling that. We actually lean towards what Nelson, Senator, Councilmember Nelson is talking about. This amendment is where it specifies independent academic institutions. We're completely with this being done with schools, because if a school is involved in this, there's going to be no ulterior motive. If anyone else is involved in it, it could be a ulterior motive, this gaining influence over an industry that is in this King County void of black and brown. We don't need anything that might impede or prevent us from getting somewhere in cannabis, when we're not even there yet. So Black Excellence in Cannabis is in support of what the amendment, the Senator, Councilmember Nelson is putting forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next person is Sikani Perkins, followed by Alex Zimmerman. Good morning, and please correct me on the pronunciation.
Excuse me, good morning. My name is Sikani Perkins. I'm with CLI, the Community Leadership Institute, as well as PLC, the Political Leadership Council, all under Puget Sound Sage. My twin brother-in-law, Sakai Perkins, initially opened up the Green Thumb Collective, which is therapeutic herbal united medicinal branch in 2011. We ran from 2013. Subsequently, we were targeted and sent a letter stating the reason we were told to shut down was due to a preschool located in the basement of a church in West Seattle. So I feel that we have been exploited, and I feel that I need to get the information out, although they already been advocating for the African-Americans and the BIPOC community affected by this. I just felt it was imperative for my voice to be heard. So that's all.
Well, thank you. Thanks for presenting today. Nice to meet you. All right, I see some hands, and I know people can see those online too. So Sakai Perkins? Excuse me, there was two, Sikani and Sakai, and then Alex Zimmerman. Yeah, there you go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As my brother stated, my name is Sakai Perkins. I'm a former owner and co-founder of the Green Thumb Collective. Like he said, we opened in 2013, 2011. We're forced to close in 2013. Based on technicalities and being restricted to boundaries or whatnot, I believe we were intentionally targeted based on other collectives in the industry located within the same vicinity still being able to operate. As individuals who are considered black or ADOS, share similar experiences regarding systematic racism, I feel that it is not only a need for us to be heard and not silenced. Our voices are very important, especially when it deals with our community. Nobody should be able to police what we do and stand for based on the history of what America has shown people of my background.
You're welcome to conclude. You can keep going.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. The next person is Alex Zimmerman, Drioni Corbano, and Matt Edgerton, followed by Mike Assai. Good morning. Your time is running.
Zihail, my lovely damn Nazi fascist mob bandita in Skaykapad who speak to us from the heaven. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I want to speak about Agenda Number Four, about local August forecast. Thank you, Councilwoman Mosqueta, for good job, what you did in your, in all council for last time. You know what it's mean? Gas, for example, falling by 5 cents. It's very good. You know what it's mean? Homeless are most disappearing Seattle. I don't see more homeless in Seattle. It's very good job, too. Price for apartment, for example, falling by 20 percentage. So right now, all black and poor can come back. It's very important, too. We have 25,000 apartment empty, so everybody can rent this apartment now. It's very big progress, what is we have this. A very good progress. Nothing, nobody killed for last few months, so people don't stop and use gun right now in Seattle. It's very important. We have not enough policemen. It's good, too. Less policemen, more freedom. I understand this absolutely. Yeah, so what is next step? Oh, what is we have next? What is we have next? Ah, food price. Food price falling down dramatically because inflation right now, zero. It's exactly what is you talking to people right now. So right now, stand-up America will have a very good life.
Thank you. The next person is Drioni. Good morning.
Yes, Breon Cobray.
I'm so sorry.
It's all good.
Breon, that's a B. Got you.
Good morning. My name is Breon Cobray, and I was the owner of the Game Collective, and I was also the first African-American man to, or person, period, to open up a medical marijuana collective here in Seattle. And then, of course, because of the color of my skin, I was victimized by the system. My store is taken away. In fact, the exact same places where my store was located, there are white people running marijuana stores out of it. It was a crying shame what you guys did to us as African-Americans in this state of Washington. Again, it's supposed to be a progressive state, but the actions say otherwise. If it wasn't for the hard work of Black Excellence in Cannabis, we wouldn't be here today talking. You guys would have just walked away and left us with nothing. The hard work that we had put into our businesses, the amount of money and time that we put into our businesses to make them what they were at that time seemed to not make a difference. And we were, again, locked out of an industry that seems to be repeating itself throughout history, where lucrative industries that open up aren't open up to people of color. And so we want to make sure that the city of Seattle understands the importance of giving us back our stores. Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of hands. Matt Edgerton, followed by Mike Assai, and the last person I have signed up is Amira Zida. And if there's anybody else who'd like to speak, you still have time to sign up. Please go ahead, and good morning, Matt.
Hey, good morning. So I'm Matt from UFCW Cannabis Division, and just wanted to, yeah, we came, we about two years ago started a process with a lot of stakeholders, people from over 42 organizations, surveyed a ton of cannabis workers about potential public policy changes to be done at a local level, because we know the state's kind of not moving, and we need to move stuff locally. I, we proposed a lot of stuff to the city, a lot of stuff that's not here, like funded training, a social equity fund, but this is like a, you know, this is a good start, and I think it's, I am very glad and appreciate the mayor's office and the council, I do for, like, you know, getting some foundation going. I do want to address this needs assessment stuff, and We Train Washington. And, you know, we, you know, We Train Washington is an intermediary that sits besides. It's a labor management organization. Our, you know, interest as a union and what we hear from workers is that we really want worker voices and needs to be really a part of that assessment, and that's part of implementation. That's running surveys, that's doing focus groups, that's something that is actually a function as opposed to the publishing of this. This is going to be a deliverable back to the city that's going to need to be reviewed, and the results are not going to be like, I, but when you take worker needs, employer needs, they're going to be different results in a survey, but where they align, that is like where there could be focus on this, and this is something that I'm out of time. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Mike Assai, followed by Amira. Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Assai.
Good morning, Councilmember Mosqueta, and good morning, council members and the public. My name is Mike Assai with MOC Collective. We were the first downtown Seattle collective, 2010, 2011. There should be no question if MOC Collective and Black Excellence in Cannabis are in support, are in full support of social equity in cannabis. Of course we are. We appreciate the support from the mayor and city council regarding cannabis social equity. We are in full support of cannabis employees' rights and protection. We stand here this morning in support of Sarah Nelson's amendment regarding the independent academic institution to help with the worker training and worker protection. You know, we're not here to fight. We just are have the concerns when it comes to union being attached to social equity. Finding the recent comments from local and national media regarding social equity applicants being drug traffickers and selling to kids is racist. This is an example of white supremacy causing more trauma to the black and brown community. MOC Collective never sold to kids. We never had any city or state violations. We stopped allowing 21-year, under 21-year patients to be members of MOC Collective. We black and brown pioneers helped create a thriving cannabis we see today in city of Seattle. We are sons, daughters, fathers, mothers, uncles, aunties, businessmen, and women, American citizens. We are not drug traffickers. We are cannabis pioneers, wanting our business back to start to recovery, a trauma done and millions lost, while including in new black and brown cannabis businesses owners.
If you have, if you have the rest of your sentence that you'd like to finish, you're welcome to. Yeah, that's fine.
I was, no, okay, I was pretty much done. But what I wanted to say is that, as you can see here this morning, we have a handful of former pioneers here that were black, and there's many more out there that Black Excellence in Cannabis, MOC Collective is bringing to the forefront. We are in the pioneers, and we just want to be heard. We don't, we feel like as if the city has kind of drowned out the pioneers. We appreciate everything that's going forward, but we just want to make sure that people know that there were blacks that were thriving and had the model that you see today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, I mean, good morning. Welcome. Thank you.
Hello. Okay, you can hear me. My name is Amira Ziyada, and I work at UFCW 3000 in the cannabis division, and I just kind of wanted to address this sort of, I don't know, fear mongering that I've been hearing when I'm at UFCW. We are a union. What unions do is make sure that, you know, businesses thrive for the workers and for the owners, and make sure that working conditions work well. And one thing that I keep not hearing from most of these people is, yes, we need equity for ownership, we need equity for, you know, marginalized communities, but we need equity in the workplace, too. A lot of the people that work in these cannabis stores are black and brown people, are marginalized from marginalized communities, and a lot are women of color. And so the reason I support Councilmember Mosqueta's needs assessment is because a lot of times workers' voices are left out, and you can't And you can't have a thriving company if you have high turnover, if workers are not knowing what they're doing, making, you know, bad sales or bad products. So I really think that, you know, we're not, we're not scary. I would love to come and have you guys talk to us and we can work together and talk about what your concerns are over having a nonprofit that is experienced. This is their expertise. This is what they do. Um, and do it very successfully. So I think, you know, we're not some big scary person. We're also people of color. My brother was arrested, um, you know, for marijuana charges in early two thousands. So I mean, this, all of this stuff is really important, but we cannot forget the voice of the workers. Thanks.
Thank you all so very much. I really appreciate the public comment today and I'm hearing a lot of common ground. Um, and before we close public comment, I also want to echo and underscore the comments that were made today and yesterday during public comment to fully condemn the racist comments about black and brown owned cannabis owners and shops as well. Absolutely unacceptable. And if anything, I hope that our conversation in Seattle, the various individuals who've come to provide public testimony and the history just here in our Pacific Northwest region helps to correct that narrative and push back against that, those racist attacks. So thank you for continuing to bring that up. With that, we still do not have Gabrielle Pahn with us, so we're going to go ahead and close out public comment for today and move on into items of business. Madam Clerk, could you please read items one, two, and three into the record?
Agenda item number one, Council Bill one two zero three nine one, an ordinance establishing the city's commitments and plans for supporting cannabis workers and supporting communities disproportionately harmed by the federal war on drugs. Agenda item number two, Council Bill one two zero three nine two, an ordinance relating to licensing cannabis businesses in Seattle. And agenda number three, Council Bill one two zero three nine three, an ordinance relating to employment in Seattle for briefing discussion and possible vote.
Thank you very much. Um, and I also want to, uh, thank the mayor's office. As, as you know, they have been at every one of our committee meetings, January, February, March, April. And then in the last two meetings as well, uh, they were listed on the agenda today just inadvertently because we're so used to having them, but I want to thank them because they are not necessary to necess, they were not intending to come. And I just wanted to take a second to recognize them and appreciate the work they've done to send us the draft legislation and all of the work that's gone into this effort. So with us today will be presenters from central staff. These include Lisa K, Amy Gore, and Jasmine Mawaha. And as you, as we get to each of the bills in front of us, each of the central staff leaders on those pieces of legislation will be speaking up. As we get started here today, I do want to take a moment before we dive in to consider the amendments in front of us to really pause and reflect, reflect on how we got here. Yes, this is a conversation that our office and this committee has been engaged in throughout this year. But this is an opportunity for us to pause and process and really reflect on how many organizations, individuals, business owners, workers, as you've heard over the last few meetings and public testimony, have been pushing back against harmful policies, policies, yes, caused by the federal war on drugs, but also harmful policies that came right out of City Hall, not even ten years ago. We're here today to look at ways that the city of Seattle, in the state of Washington, can push back on these federal policies, these harmful policies, also within the city of Seattle, to improve labor standards, to support black and brown business owners, and to make sure that within the cannabis industry, there's strong training and worker support, small business support, technical assistance, and ways for us over time through the advice from the advisory board to incorporate additional policies. As you also heard in public comment, this is a small step, a small step in the right direction towards undoing some of those past harms. I want to specifically thank some of the folks who've laid the ground for this small step that we're taking today. The groundwork that has been led by Black Excellence and Cannabis Coalition, the Emerald City Collective, African American Affairs Commission, organizations working on this issue across our region, including UFCW three thousand, who has been working in partnership with black led community organizations over the last few years. And I specifically want to thank our city staff, largely people of color led from the Finance and Administrative Services Department, Office of Civil Rights, who have been working diligently in community over the last three to four years, as you saw from the central staff memo, initiating the racial equity toolkit analysis in twenty eighteen and directly having conversation on behalf of the city on how things could be done differently. And today, years later, that hard work is beginning to see the daylight and beginning to get put into statute. Again, thank you to our largely people of color led city staff from Finance and Administrative Services, Office of Civil Rights as well, who've worked on this racial equity toolkit and have been asking, yearning, and in some cases demanding action on the advice that they got from community, uh, over the last few years. While we acknowledge that this is a step forward today, um, we know that there's a lot of work to do. So I want to thank again Breonna Thomas and Dan Eater from the mayor's office, along with Devon and Gerald Hankerson from, uh, the mayor's office as well, who really helped initiate this conversation at the beginning of this year. And the mayor's office, we know, um, because of the strong leadership they've had on this legislation and drafting it and sending it to council for our consideration, we know there's much, much work to be done and that they are committed to the next steps to make sure that this, these ideas come to fruition and that in partnership with the state as well, we continue to push for more. In particular, I want to also acknowledge that we have, um, strong interest in making sure that year over year, we're looking at opportunities for us to continue to invest in creating more equity. And that will require budget conversations with our city budget office, with the mayor's office, as we collectively work to recover from the deficit we're facing, but continue to plan for deep investments in this community. It's clear that our government policies have caused harm, as you've heard from public testimony directly from individuals caused by the public, public policies that, that caused harm. And we should be centering much of our, um, policy strategies to address harm on those who've experienced harm directly. Black cannabis owners, workers, owners displaced when the state gave cannabis licenses away and took them away from black owned businesses and workers. So with that, I want to thank you all for this process. And again, reiterate, this is just a first step. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Amy Gore, Lisa K, and Jasmine Mawaha, who will go with us sequentially through the legislation in front of us and walk us through various amendments. Unfortunately, there are some situations where we have competing amendments, so we'll have a chance to walk through those as well with central staff. So each council member understands which items might be, um, in competition. So that when we take a vote on one, you understand the implications for the other. Okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and, um, consider, uh, Council Bill one two zero three one nine first. And I guess in order to have the legislation in front of us officially so that we can then consider amendments, I'll go ahead and move it. I move the committee recommends passage of Council Bill one two zero three one nine. This is the ordinance establishing the city's commitments and plans for supporting cannabis workers and supporting communities disproportionately harmed by the federal war on drugs. One two zero three. I'm sorry, nine one. I transpose those numbers. I heard a second. Thank you, Councilmember Havel. The Council Bill one two zero three nine one has been moved and it's been seconded. So let's go ahead and turn it over to central staff to, um, to give us a quick reminder of the legislation and walk us through the amendments. And if anybody from IT hears any feedback, please let me know. I'm getting a little bit of feedback up here.
Um, thank you, Chair Mosquita. Good morning, council members. My name is Amy Gore and I'm with Council Central Staff. First, I'll give you a very brief reminder of Council Bill one two zero three nine one. As you recall, it would detail actions the city intends to take to address racial disparities in the cannabis industry. Some of the actions are including cannabis equity issues in the city's twenty twenty three state and federal legislative agendas. It includes advocating with King County for the expungement of cannabis convictions, partnering with organizations that represent negatively impacted communities to mitigate the damage of the federal war on drugs. It includes pursuing funds from the state and federal government for cannabis equity work, as well as funding a cannabis needs assessment and appointing an advisory committee comprised of workers, industry members, and community members to support the cannabis needs assessment. Um, unless there are any questions on the bill, I will go ahead and dive into the amendments.
I don't see any hands on the bill. Okay, let's go ahead and dive into the amendments. And as Amy will see up here, the first two amendments, amendment number one and amendment number two, look to be in competition. So we will go ahead and walk through both of those. Is that correct, Amy?
Yes, that is. And I have, um, the table that is in the memo. Um, I can share that. We aren't bringing forward all of the amendments, but, um, that might be helpful to walk, to help us walk through if you would prefer me to share my screen.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Just one moment. Okay, can everybody see the table?
You know, um, thank you for bringing it up. We have small screens in the room here today, so, uh, we will do our best. And, um, I know folks can also find it in the central staff memo. So thanks for sharing that for folks watching also electronically. Please go ahead.
Okay. So first up for discussion is Amendment one. It is sponsored by Councilmember Mosquita. The amendment would add a new section with more detail about who should do the cannabis needs assessment. It would specify that the needs assessment should be conducted by a Seattle-based educational institution in partnership with a nonprofit organization with experience in curriculum development, administering retail training and apprenticeship, apprenticeship programs and is not primarily funded by cannabis business or employer associations. As you mentioned, Councilmember Mosquita, Amendment one and Amendment two, um, which is sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, are mutually exclusive. Would you like me to go ahead and describe Amendment two at this point so that they can be discussed together?
I think that'd be fine. Thank you, Amy. Please go ahead.
Great. Amendment two, um, as I mentioned, sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, would also add specificity to the bill and clarify that the needs assessment shall be conducted by an independent academic institution with local experience identifying training needs for workers, developing industry and job-specific training curriculum, and delivering job skills programs. And, um, like I mentioned, those, um, two are mutually exclusive and therefore the committee needs to vote on one or the other.
Thank you so much. So colleagues, I think what I'm going to do is I will make some comments about Amendment number one. I'll then, uh, allow Councilmember Nelson to make some comments about Amendment number two. We'll have folks ask any questions that they may have and then we are, we will go ahead and move to put the amendments in front of us. If Amendment one, uh, passes, obviously then Amendment two would not need, be needed. And then if Amendment one does not pass, then Amendment two would be considered. So with that, I will go ahead and share some comments. I want to thank folks who have provided feedback on Amendment number one. We did hear, including from, um, some of my colleagues as well, that there was a need to make sure that we were updating some of the language in Amendment number one. According to that feedback, we worked diligently to make sure that we were in, uh, conversation with the mayor's office as well, who in committee also expressed an interest in contracting with a Seattle-based educational institution. And I, uh, took the opportunity to work in partnership with my council colleagues who I knew were interested in this, who had reached out on it, and also with the mayor's office to find some common ground here. Unfortunately, I didn't know that there was a proposed amendment that would be in competition. So I was working, um, in good faith to try to find that common ground here. So I'm going to summarize what the amendment does. And I want to actually read from what the needs assessment is intending to do. The needs assessment says the city will find a cannabis needs, the city will fund a cannabis needs assessment to further clarify what investments and improvements are needed in this industry to support the city in moving forward. At a minimum, the city will provide demographic information about workers, workers currently employed in Seattle's cannabis industry. In addition to evaluating the training needs of the incumbent workforce, the study will evaluate and determine the highest training needs for workers who wish to advance in the industry beyond entry level positions and also those seeking to become new owners. The study will include recommendations about whether and how to fund such training. Now I read this because it's important that we remember the needs assessment is really centered on what the workforce needs. It does talk about how workers can become new owners. But the intention here is to, to develop an assessment for how we can provide the needed support for workforce development. Workforce development across this nation is something that's embraced by both parties. It's embraced by both business and labor, and this is absolutely in the same vein as workforce development. When we talk about workforce development, when we talk about improved training, when we talk about what we need to create safer environments for frontline workers or allow for upward mobility, it's always included workers and employers at the table. When we talk about improving labor laws, we know that labor laws are strongest when they have workers at the table, folks who represent workers and business. There is no difference here in what we're talking about in Amendment number one. It includes working with a nonprofit through a, uh, partnership with the local schools to make sure that we bring both business and workers to the table. Our labor laws in Washington State are some of the strongest around the country. Our labor laws in Seattle are some of the strongest around the country. And our local economies in Washington State and Seattle are the strong, some of the strongest around the country because we have brought workers, union representatives, associations, and employers to the table. There is nothing to be feared here by putting forward a proposal that is universal. When we talk about how we create workforce standard development and what we have done in this region to create strong apprenticeship programs that again are applauded by business and labor. So I want to be clear what this legislation is intending to do. It's intending to help workers create safer environments, also help create upward mobility and ensure that we are looking at workforce development, which is, which is largely embraced by the employer community in other arenas. The comments that I've seen submitted via letters, um, and, and some of the public testimony earlier today brought up a lot of concerns around unions. And the anti-union comments are actually anti-worker. That's harmful rhetoric in a place like Seattle in Washington State where we've stood by workers. Because when we know when we stand by workers, it actually improves, um, the stability of local, uh, employers and it actually improves our local economy. We may have other places around this country that are largely anti-union and that kind of rhetoric could fly, but not here. Not in our state, not in this city, where we've seen the benefits of bringing workers and businesses to the table. So I want to put this forward truly with the intent of making sure that we have an entity that is knowledgeable about this sector, knowledgeable about the growth and the, um, flexibility that's needed for us to respond to both state regulations that are changing and the opportunity for employers as well as business, uh, excuse me, employers as well as workers to be able to evolve in this industry with a knowledgeable partner that can work in partnership with our local Seattle school institutions. I'm proud of the work that we've done, uh, in partnership with the mayor's office on this legislation. And I think that the amendment here as amended, which gives deference to the mayor's office in partnership with a Seattle-based entity, in partnership with an entity who truly knows how to bring together workers and businesses can help us identify ways to make sure that this assessment is needed. I really want to make sure that the, um, words like workforce development and apprenticeship, those are not conceived as dirty words, nor should the terms union or nonprofit. To have concern around nonprofits being raised, uh, really signals to me that this is, this is not about the intent of the assessment. This is just concern about work unions in general, and this is not the place for that kind of discussion. This is an opportunity for us to identify how we can best pull together workers and businesses to move forward on what the needs assessment is intending to do. So with that, I really appreciate, um, the opportunity to have worked with some of my colleagues who had reached out on this amendment. And in addition to that, with the mayor's office, um, for the help in thinking through, um, a school-based story and, uh, educational institution-based approach here. And I do hope that I can earn your support for Amendment number one. With that, my colleague, uh, excuse me, my colleague, uh, Councilmember Nelson, would you like to walk through Amendment number two? And for the folks in the room, if you'd like to make Councilmember Nelson's screen a little bit larger so we can see her, that'd be great. Thank you. Ah, perfect. That looks better. Oh, Councilmember Nelson, we can't hear you. You might be on mute still. Finding that mute button. That's the universal, that's the universal look.
Well, okay, well, thank you. All right. So I appreciate everyone who came out for public comment and the energy that's going into this, to this legislation. It's important work, and there has been a lot of work already done at the state level to advance social equity in cannabis. So I just want to focus on, on what's happened at the city so far. And in 2018, FAS began work along with OED, SDCI, OCR to eliminate racial disparities in cannabis, held two dozen stakeholder engagements, convened the Cannabis Community Forum in February 2020, and conducted a survey in 2019, which has been referenced in the past. But let me just remind people, this, this survey was, was, you know, one of the purposes was to figure out ways to redistribute wealth within the cannabis industry. And they went into looking at three different models: ownership-centric, workforce-centric, community investment framework. So there has been already a lot of work that's been done on this front. And one of the products of that work was the Racial Equity Toolkit that came out of this interdepartmental effort. They also produced five key policy change recommendations. And the stakeholders also put forward some additional recommendations, including a line with the state's Social Equity Task Force recommendations. And in the end, you know, there was, there was a lot of agreement on the path going forward. This was all presented in the committee meeting, I believe it was on March 22nd. So it's clear that the city supports the cannabis industry and as a whole, and it really does want to see it thrive. And so I would just say that if, if, if this legislation is really about advancing cannabis equity, we need to listen to the community that has spoken, the Black community members who have come today and have asked that their needs be centered in, in this discussion in going forward, because otherwise it seems as though it could just be simply a vehicle for advancing the interests of, of, you know, an outside or a special interest. So all of that said, the, this needs assessment is a way, even though there have been already a lot of needs that have been forwarded, and we've also talked about public safety and, and training. I agree that there is much more that can be done. And so this needs assessment is intended, I believe, to surface additional ways that we can advance equity. And if that's the case, we need an entity that's going to be doing that, that can, that has expertise, and that can put out a product that will be useful. And there were a couple of academic institutions that were mentioned by, by Paula Sardinas in her comment, Wazoo and UW. There is also another academic institution right here in town, you know, it's Seattle Central. They actually have a, the Cannabis Institute, and it is, it's designed to help workers progress in the industry. So I am saying that we have a lot of academic institutions that are well-equipped to, to do this work. And why is that important? It's important because they, this whole process has to have the trust of everybody involved and, and, and needs to bring everybody to the table, both workers and, and actual the cannabis community, the retail owners, because we're talking about going forward in a way that helps the industry as a whole. So we, they need to have the trust of the participants, and they have to be independent, neutral, not coming in with an, with an agenda that's already been, you know, pretty clear in discussions that have happened with my office and in, as I've mentioned before. So unless all the parties have confidence that the party conducting the needs assessment is fair and unbiased, the assessment will lack credibility, won't be useful. It will lose the trust, as we saw this morning, the letter, we, we want to keep everyone at the table. We don't want the, the retail owners to leave the table, because they will be implementing the, the measures that come out of this needs assessment. So I'm asking for an honest and transparent needs assessment to be conducted, not one that stacks the deck for a particular interest. I'm asking for one that, that respects the, the expertise of the people that have been working in the cannabis industry as employers and employees, and just to go forward with some impartial work that will end up helping the whole community and the industry thrive in Seattle. And so I don't really know, so that's, you know, my, some of my opening statements, but I think that it would be fruitful to talk about what nonprofits is your, your amendment contemplating.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Herbert, please go ahead.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Councilmember Musqueta, for making changes to your amendment since our last, last committee meeting, making clear, one, that there isn't a specific nonprofit named. And through our conversation with the mayor's office, we heard from the mayor's office that they'll be in the driver's seat in, in the, the process to select the nonprofit partner. And I just want to say as simply as, as possible, the idea of having the independent academic institution at the lead, but partnering with, with a nonprofit is, is simply to make sure that everybody who needs to be at the table is at the table and is part, the nonprofit works with, much, much like a lot of our academic worker needs surveys, academic work about the, the outcomes of our, our labor laws. The academic works with a nonprofit to do, as, as we heard in public comment, some of the surveying and focus, focus group work, again, to make sure everybody is at the table. We want workers at the table. The organization that some people are concerned about is a labor management joint organization. And we have found, as Councilmember Musqueta said, that some of our best workforce training programs have come about because of the partnership of, of workers and, and management, in this case, store owners. So in my, in my mind, this, this amendment is, is intended to make sure that everybody is at the table moving forward as part of the assessment of, of the needs of the workforce. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Herbert. With that, I think it's helpful to go ahead and move into considering the amendments. I move to amend Council Bill 120391 as presented on amendment number one. Is there a second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. I will not rehash some of the conversation we just had to tee up these amendments. I do really appreciate Councilmember Herbert's succinct summary of the, the value of a labor management entity, but also, again, underscoring a nonprofit. The word nonprofit should not be a scary thing as, as we hear folks raise concern. I want to make sure that it is important for us to know that this is really an effort to make sure that we're working with an academic institution. We know that this is important. This is what we had originally hoped for. But as, when we initially introduced the amendment, we were incredibly neutral as on the organization and the amendment that we sent to law. The feedback that we got from law was that we needed to actually have some examples, be specific, say such as where possible. And so we tried to do that, but want to make sure that we are incorporating the feedback and really making this a deference to the mayor's office in partnership with a city, Seattle-based educational institution, and that we're working to lift up the value of bringing both employers and employees to the table. Thanks so much for considering this amendment, and Councilmember Herbert, excuse me, Councilmember Nelson, for the purposes of debate.
So I don't think that nonprofit is a bad name. I was just simply wondering what nonprofits, but that's not my point for raising my hand. Your amendment just says "educational institution" and, and makes no mention of independent or academic. So that, I, I believe that that is really crucial to spell that out, which is why I put it into my, into my amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. The good news, folks, is that Councilmember Nelson and I have a very harmonious piece of amendment language to consider after all of this. So we will talk a little bit more about the neutrality and the balance as well that we've been both speaking to in our next amendment. The amendment is in front of us, amendment number one. Is there any additional comments? Hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please call the role on the adoption of amendment number one?
I have an additional comment.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, Councilmember Nelson. I thought that was an old hand. Please go ahead.
I know. So you just, you just made me realize that we, we will have representation. I mean, depending on how this goes down, the advisory committee is a place where we can have a specific role for, for labor. And so that is, so that will be represented in the people in the body that defines the scope of work of this needs assessment. And so that, so I'm asking for this to be a, to be a solely neutral body that does not have people that will then be part of the advisory committee.
Thank you so much. And again, I would reiterate, neutral, it means bringing people to the table, which is what an entity does when they bring in both workers and, and employers to figure out training strategies to move forward. I think it's important for us also to consider that the needs assessment brings in the best practices and looks at ways to enhance training and opportunity within the industry. And so having subject matter experts on the industry is really the goal here. And then we'll talk about that balance table in just a second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, excuse me, Madam Clerk, could you please call the role on the adoption of amendment number one?
Councilmember Herbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson? I'm sorry, was that a no?
No.
Councilmember Nelson?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Madam Sher Musqueta?
Aye.
Madam Sher, that is three in favor to oppose.
Thank you very much. The motion carries and amendment number one is adopted. Amy, I assume that means that amendment number two is not up for consideration. Should we move to amendment number three as amended?
Is that the, can a parliamentarian please step in here? Can, can two amendments not proceed to full council discussion and vote?
Amelia, would you like to weigh in on that?
Yes, of course. Yes, Councilwoman Musqueta. Yeah, so at this point, amendment number two cannot be considered because amendment one was adopted. That does not prohibit the, the sponsor to bring back or bring aboard amendment number two to the city council meeting on September 6th.
Thank you so much. Okay, we will go ahead and again, talk about where we have common ground. We have distributed electronically to the council members. I believe that it's going to be included in the minutes, but we have also hard copies here at the desk for folks in person. Councilmember Nelson and myself did have the opportunity to talk about amendments three and four and really work to find common ground and balance. Councilmember Nelson, we have this joint amendment. I'm going to defer to you for opening comments on this, but first I'd like to put the amendment in front of us, if that sounds okay. I move, oh, great. I move to amend Council Bill 120391 as presented on walk-on amendment three, version two. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded. Walk-on amendment version three, excuse me, amendment three, version two is in front of us. Councilwoman Nelson, would you like to speak to the intent behind the amendment?
Yes, the intent is to get a, a representation of people that are involved in and have a stake in the cannabis industry. And so the first category here is representatives from organizations that advocate for the cannabis industry and its workers. And I believe that there are two clear standouts here. It would most likely come down to UFCW and Craft Cannabis Collective. But we have to have fair and even representation. And so that is why that, that number is two. And these people are important because they represent the industry as a whole. They're not, they're not owners or workers. They represent the interests of the industry. They, they know what's happening at, at a national level. They can identify best practices, come with, with some ideas for, for the needs assessment. And so that is why an industry representation category is, is important, and that's why the number is two. I also felt strongly, and we agree, that, that the people who will be benefiting from and implementing whatever recommendations come out of the needs assessment be represented. And I'm talking about employees and owners. They're the ones that will be living day-to-day with the improvements that come forward. They will, and also they are the ones that stand to gain from the benefits that, that are provided in the other two pieces of legislation. So this category is to, as you can read it, to industry workers, to business owners or their designees, and that also is an even split. And then finally, the last category is three representatives from the communities that have been historically harmed by the war on drugs or who have advocated for cannabis equity in King County, and with a priority for those that meet the social equity criteria already put forward by the, by the, by the state. So clearly, we're trying to have alignment with what, what has already been done at the state level around identifying equity, equity partners. The people in this category do not have to be someone who is trying to get a license, but they do have to hew pretty closely to the criteria that we've identified. We're trying to help. So that, that number is three. And I think that this is a good, a good representation of the industry in general. They can put forward a work scope that will be robust and fair.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Councilmember Nelson. I'll just add to that, and then we'll see if there's any additional questions. I really do want to thank Councilmember Nelson for the feedback that we've had over the last, or the, the back and forth that we've had over the last week. To be able to find balance in this amendment, I think, is what are both of us really intended to do. So this has really three categories, right? This has business representatives, this has labor representatives, and it has community representatives, equally balanced. The important note that Councilmember Nelson put in the first section there in the amendment language is that ideally, this would include one person from the industry association and one person representing workers. Those two in categories then are complemented by two worker representatives and two employer, or their designated representatives, making three in each of those columns, then complemented by the third category of three community organizations who've directly been harmed by the war on drugs. And, and I would also note by the past policies here in Seattle within the last 10 years. So putting a nod to our colleagues in the audience who have been calling for a direct call-out for representation on the assessment, excuse me, on the advisory board here as well. And I thank again Councilmember Nelson for her work to strike this right balance and for the mayor's office for continuing to echo the importance of having the right balance from the get-go. That was their intention, and I think that this amendment just really brings more of that to light so that we're all emphasizing to our community partners, we're all on the same page here. Councilmember Nelson, follow-up, and then I think, I don't see any additional hands, so we would go to a vote.
I just wanted to underscore the point you made that I forgot to make, which is precisely that it was public comment, the first go-round, and that really did hone our interest in this, in this category.
Thank you. And thanks to our staff as well. I know Sage Dupree had a big role in this, along with community, getting community feedback. So thanks so much. Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Any additional comments in front of us? Hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please call the role on the adoption of amendment three, version two?
Councilmember Herbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson? Councilmember Peterson? Member Peters, oh. I'm sorry, was that a yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Madam Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is five in favor and none opposed.
Wonderful. The motion carries and the amendment is adopted. Okay, Councilmember Herbold, I believe that brings us to, uh, your amendment that I'm happy to co-sponsor here today. Would you like me to put it in front of us for the purposes of discussion? Okay, I move to amend Council Bill one two zero three nine one as presented in amendment number five. Is there a second? One more time. I heard a second.
Thank you so much.
Well, they heard a second. Our audio is just, uh, struggling to catch up. Gotcha. It has been moved and seconded. Councilmember Herbold, that's the prime sponsor of this amendment. Would you like to speak to it?
Per- perfect. Thank you so much. Um, the, um, amendment simply, uh, again recognizes that, um, the language as, uh, originally proposed, um, did not have everybody at the table who needs to be at the table in these discussions. Um, we have, uh, community organizations that are doing amazing work, um, around helping, uh, folks who have, uh, lived experiences, uh, in the, uh, war on drugs, uh, that are doing, uh, again, amazing work. Um, helping people, uh, navigate, uh, their disentanglement with the criminal legal system. Um, and, uh, they really must be at the table when we are looking how to move this work further, specifically as it relates to the expungement of records. Um, so again, this is, this is amendment and amendment, um, that, um, a- again, is, is intended to, um, specify that the city will partner with King County as well as communities negatively impacted by the, the war on drugs and those with lived experience in the criminal justice system.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Um, I will jump in. I don't see any additional hands. I just want to thank you, Councilmember Herbold, for including some of the language here to, um, really focusing your language to make sure that we're centering those with lived experience in the criminal, uh, with lived experience being harmed by the criminal justice system so that we're ensuring folks, um, are able to, um, be, uh, centered in these discussions as we ensure a true expungement occurs. So thank you so much for all the work that you've done on this, and I'm just honored to be able to be listed as a co-sponsor. Um, any additional comments? Okay, I think that will serve as closing and starting. And Madam Clerk, could you please call the role on the adoption of amendment number five?
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Nelson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Madam Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is fo- four, three in favor and two abstain.
Thank you very much. With that, the motion carries and amendment number five is adopted. Okay, Councilmember Nelson, um, I am going to turn it to you. You did have amendments number six and seven up next. Would you like to provide us with an update on, on the amendments that you had suggested?
I have withdrawn the amendments for now, and I, uh, I emailed staff and, uh, the mayor's office and, and your staff as well.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, uh, for the record, Councilmember Nelson has withdrawn amendments number six and amendments number seven. Okay, Amy, how are we doing? Did we get through all of our amendments for this first piece of legislation?
That is everything that I had for amendment, so I think it's ready for a vote on the amended legislation now.
Okay, wonderful. So colleagues, I do want to thank you again for the collective work on the legislation that we have in front of us and really again underscore our, um, support for the community-driven process that the mayor's office had embarked upon, you know, including, uh, centering the legislation on the feedback that FAS began receiving from community in 2018. I really appreciate that we have, uh, found a pathway forward on some of these items. And I think that the legislation is stronger because of it. So thank you for the work that you've done on this legislation. And I do, uh, want to thank the, the broad array of community partners who've continued to testify and support. We do have, uh, Council Bill one two zero three nine one as amended in front of us. Is there any additional comments? Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I support the equitable goals of these three pieces of legislation. It's really a full package here for equity. And I, I plan to support the other two pieces of legislation before us today. While I support numerous sections of this Council Bill one two zero three nine one, I'm, I'm concerned about how the bill was substantially modified. Concerned about the neutrality of, in the needs assessment. The legislation from the mayor's office has now been substantially changed, and I don't think the amendment has made it better for the needs assessment. I believe a competitive request for proposals process should select an objective, neutral academic institution that would conduct the needs assessment, period. So due to the substantial change made at committee, I need to vote no on the amended bill today. Perhaps it can be further modified before the full council vote. And while I'll be voting no on this bill, I'll be voting yes, uh, for the other two pieces of legislation.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Nelson, please go ahead.
Well, if I could say bidow, Councilmember Peterson, I would. But, um, basically, um, I believe that, yes, there, uh, are many good measures. And I'm really sorry for having worked so diligently and in such good faith with you on the makeup of the advisory council. But, um, I do believe that, uh, the, that the, uh, the voices of community were not heard in the, um, in the formation of, uh, in the, uh, needs assessment, uh, amendment. And, um, so I will be voting no on, on process grounds. And, um, perhaps that we can work together over the next month or so to, uh, to work toward a needs assessment that will be truly reflective of community needs and also, um, neutral, independent and academic entity that will be doing this work.
Councilmember Herbold, please go ahead.
Thanks. I just want to state for the record that we were told, uh, by, by the executive, I, I believe Brianna Thomas and Dan Eater were with us at the last meeting, um, and they confirmed that the process that would be using for the needs assessment would not be a sole source, uh, contract and that it would be, um, the result of a competitive RFP. I think that's important to note for the record. That was a commitment that was made to us in the last meeting.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Herbold. And, and that's correct. I want to lift that up. I specifically asked at the, on the record, even with the last amendment that we had, if this would be a competitive process that would be, uh, deferential to an RFP through the mayor's office, and the answer was yes from Dan Eater. So let the record show that this is going to be, um, a, a neutral assessment of who gets to, um, participate in the needs assessment. I also think that centering this with academic institutions ensures that organizations, um, who have the work to, uh, in this arena um, is very relevant. It's incredibly important to make sure that a needs assessment, um, does include workers at the table as well as businesses. So there's no hiding of the ball here. We are incredibly excited about the opportunity to bring people to the table to, um, provide an assessment of what we need to do in this category. And I think the rhetoric is frankly divisive, not helpful. And it is already trying to pull communities apart that are already disproportionately harmed by the war on drugs. Yes, but also by being, um, pulled apart within, uh, already, uh, diverse and, um, complex, uh, uh, situation where many business licenses have been removed from folks, many workers are in harm's way. And we want to do everything that we can to bring people together. That's what it's all about. So with that, I think that we are ready to vote. Um, we have, uh, Council Bill one two zero three nine one as amended in front of us. Any additional comments? Oh, please go ahead, Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Peterson.
Liz, Councilmember Peterson had his hand up first. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Yes, glad that the, um, competitive request for proposal was put on the record. I was saying competitive requests, uh, restful proposals for academic institutions only. That's what I meant. Um, and also the advisory committee is where everybody will be at the table. So I'm glad to see that the advisory committee, uh, amendment was, was included. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your support for that amendment. Councilmember Nelson.
This is a follow-up from Councilmember Herbold's point that, yes, there will be an RFP. But, um, continuing with my line of questioning, what nonprofits are we talking about? Um, if there is, if there aren't more than one nonprofit that is going to do this work, that is, uh, that is not competitive. And, um, I don't see how you do a, an RFP for, uh, one organization the way that, uh, that organization or that nonprofit is described in the, in this amendment. So, um, you know, I appreciate the effort, but, um, we really do have to be honest about the fact that, uh, when we talk about partnering with a nonprofit. Uh, I think that we need to be transparent from the get-go. We, you know, if we're going to say that, uh, what nonprofits are we talking about? And, um, it, are there enough to choose from?
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the final amendment, uh, bill as amended. Madam Clerk, could you please call the role on the adoption of Council Bill one two zero three nine one as amended?
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
No.
Councilmember Nelson.
No.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Madam Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is five in favor, two opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries and Council Bill one two zero three nine one as amended will be transmitted to the full Seattle City Council for a vote on September sixth, I believe. Just looking for that date in my notes. Yep, September sixth. Thank you so much. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to, uh, agenda item number two. Um, it's already been read into the record, and I believe this is Lisa Kay. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, I apologize, Chair. Point of inquiry, uh, what was the final vote count? I heard five to two, but wasn't it three to two?
Uh, the final vote is three to two. Thank you for clarifying that for the record.
Thank you.
Go ahead, uh, Lisa. Good morning.
Good morning. Come, um, Madam Chair, um, Council Bill one twenty-three nine-two is before you, uh, today. This would create a city's social equity cannabis license and establish eligibility cri- criteria for that license consistent with the draft rules from the State Liquor and Cannabis Board. Under this proposal, the social equity license from the city would not require an annual fee. The proposed bill would also eliminate all city cannabis fees for re-inspections and licensing and statement. And the bill would expand the types of activities that could be covered by the license, should the state enable these in the future. For example, on-premises consumption, delivery, or special event consumption. Finally, the bill changes terminology in the municipal code from marijuana to cannabis. There is one amendment, uh, today for the committee's consideration. And if there are no questions on the substance of the bill, I could share my screen and, uh, to post the amendment if that would be helpful.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, that's showing up now. Amendment one.
It's not showing.
I have to hit show.
There we go.
You'd think I'd have this by now. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. No, no problem.
Uh, this amendment is sponsored by Councilmember Herbold, and it would reduce the fees for small cannabis production businesses and for cannabis transport businesses in Seattle.
Thank you. Councilmember Herbold, uh, would you like to move your amendment?
I move amendment one to Council Bill twelve oh three ninety-two. Thank you.
Wonderful. It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Herbold, would you like to speak to your amendment?
I would. I'm really, um, delighted that this bill is providing, um, vehicle for me to forward, um, some, uh, fees to the business license fee that, um, I committed to, several years ago, uh, considering after, uh, then Councilmember, uh, Burgess and I together sponsored during the budget process, some increases to business license fees. Um, but did not really consider fully the equity implications of an increase to three thousand five hundred dollars for, for all businesses. And so at the time, we asked FAS, uh, to, uh, consider, um, a stepped approach. And, um, I, I've been in touch with FAS over the last several years about the possibility of reducing some of the business license costs, um, because, um, uh, of, of, of two things. One, recognizing that, um, all of these businesses, um, are, are, are not equal. But then also recognizing that there is some duplication of work required by the city as, um, as compared to the, um, the licensing work required by the state. So I'm, I'm really pleased that the bill as introduced includes a removal of both the two hundred and fifty dollar fee for premises inspections and the two hundred dollar, uh, two hundred and fifty dollar fee for the license requirement fee. But my amendment is based on a proposal that FAS developed back in twenty twenty, um, after their analysis conducted, uh, following the Council twenty eighteen, uh, statement of legislative intent. And they, they report that business owners that are tier-one purchasers owing sites of two thousand square feet or less, of lower margins than any other classification of marijuana business and must comply with the same regulatory requirements as all other marijuana businesses. Uh, they go on to say that accept best practices for regulatory fee setting, allow consideration of a licensee's ability to pay. And that FAS's legislative proposal was motivated by that perspective, that these best practices allow a regulatory license, regulatory agency to consider its own administrative burden in, uh, in, to account when setting fees. Uh, FAS finally noted that the, because of the amount of time required to inspect marijuana transporter businesses is significantly less than necessary for any other type of licensed marijuana business. FAS poses to also apply the reduced fee to the transporter classification. Um, for only two tier-one, uh, licensees in Seattle, there is currently no transporter business. But then the lighter regulatory, uh, load of any, central fewer businesses, I think, it's reduced fee, um, for this classification as recommended by, by FAS, um, is, is the smart pain. So, uh, in, in, in some, um, it regu- it, um, establishes the fee to be two thousand dollars for these smaller businesses, um, as, as, uh, compared to three thousand five hundred. Um, and the, um, the impact is, is very slight because of the small number of businesses that fall into this category. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Herbold. I am definitely going to support this amendment. I think it takes another step towards meeting our equity goals and, uh, encourage our colleagues to do the same as well. Are there any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the role on the adoption of amendment number one.
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Councilmember Nelson. Wonderful.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Madam Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is five in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. Amendment number one carries and the amendment is adopted. The bill is amended is now before the, before us. Are there any additional comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the, oh, please go ahead. Did somebody say something?
Yeah, I did. Um, so originally I had an amendment that, um, would have given priority for, um, for, uh, holders of medical marijuana, um, uh, licenses in the past, but lost them in the transition to recreational marijuana and the, and the licensing thereof. And I, and I included that I was running with that amendment because I believe that this was, um, that, uh, that this was, uh, a piece of legislation that would be, um, complimentary to, but, uh, build on the, um, the soc- social equity criteria put forward by the state. So that is why I had that amendment in there. I have, um, when, uh, Councilmember Herbold said, well, how would that be operationalized? Um, those licenses are, come from the state. It became clear that, um, there really wasn't a way for, uh, this priority to be included in this package. Um, in that this, so when I In this, so when I realized that this package is mostly about the, the changes that we're making to the cost of licenses. That is the reason why that was pulled.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please call the roll on passage, on the passage of Council Bill 120392 as amended?
Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Madam Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is five in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. The motion carries and the committee recommendation that the bill pass as amended will be sent to the September 6th Seattle City Council meeting for a final vote. Okay, last item, we have Jasmine Marwaha with us. I don't believe this piece of legislation has any amendments to it. Council Bill 120393, Jasmine, would you like to give us a quick briefing to orient us?
Sure, thank you. Again, my name is Jasmine Marwaha, Central Staff Analyst, staffing Council Bill 120393. Also known as a cannabis employee job retention ordinance. This bill would require cannabis business employers to take certain actions to increase transparency and reduce job insecurity caused by changes in ownership. First, to address transparency concerns, the bill would require cannabis employers and their integrated enterprises to provide written notice to their employees of the names used by any of their associated integrated enterprises. This notice would be incorporated into the current Notice of Employment Information Obligations that employers already provide to their employees. To address job insecurity caused by changes in ownership of a cannabis business, the bill would require outgoing cannabis businesses being sold to provide a preferential hiring list to the incoming cannabis business and post a notice of change in ownership at the job site. An incoming employer would then be required to hire from that preferential hiring list for 180 days after the change in control and must retain employees for at least 90 days unless there's a just cause to discharge them. They would also be required to post a notice of change in ownership at the job site for 180 days after the change in control. So that concludes my brief summary of Council Bill 121393. To date, I've received no requests for amendments on this bill, as you mentioned, Chair Mosqueta. But I'm happy to answer any questions from the committee.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. I do again want to thank the mayor's office for working diligently to sort of share some initial ideas around this legislation in advance. And we really are supportive of the legislation. Glad to hear there's no amendments. I think it's a reflection of a job well done on the initial draft. If there's no amendments, I move the committee recommends passage of Council Bill 120393. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. And are there any additional comments? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120393?
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Madam Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is five in favor, none opposed.
All right, that great. Thank you. Five in favor, none opposed. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I think I spoke over you. Excited because the motion carries, that is our third and final piece of legislation related to cannabis equity. The committee recommendation that this and the other two bills be sent to the September 6th Seattle City Council meeting for final vote will be passed on. Congratulations to all who have worked on this and we'll see you on September 6th for a final vote. Yay. With that, let's move on to agenda item number four.
Agenda item number four, economic and revenue forecast for August update for briefing and discussion.
Thank you very much. And I am so thankful that we have with us the the folks here with us from the Office of the Economic and Revenue Forecast Council, excuse me, Office of Economic Revenue Forecast. This is an independent office along with the team from the City Budgets Office. So we'll have with us Director Ben Noble, John Yon Dross, Sean Thompson, all from the Office of Economic and Revenue Forecast. And we'll have with us Julie Ding Lee, Dave Hayness, and Alex Zine, excuse me, Zen from the City Budgets Office. We do also have with us central staff if there's any additional questions. Today, I would like to ask the team here from CBO and ORF, we need a new acronym, but Office of Economic Revenue Forecast. If you could try to abbreviate your presentation. I know we originally intended for a much longer presentation here today. But as a reminder for everyone, the full presentation from the Office of Economic Revenue Forecast can be found from last Monday's presentation. It is all available on Seattle Channel. So to the extent you want more details that are not able to get into the full weeds today, we do encourage you to watch that full presentation from last Monday. With that, I'm excited that we have the opportunity, as we've committed to every quarter, to be able to provide a report out in the Finance Committee from the Office of Economic Revenue Forecast in their presentation to the Forecast Council. Again, the presentation took place on August 8th. The presentation today is going to be an abbreviated version of that presentation. And it will show that we continue to receive shaky news at best on how the revenue projections for the city will continue to come in and how that will impact our overall health for the general fund. This will be a preview of what the mayor's office is considering for their deliberations in crafting their fall budget that will be transmitted to us at the end of next month. With that, thanks again, Director Noble, for the abbreviated version here today, and you are up first.
Thank you, my pleasure. I'm going to lead the presentation. As we move through it, when we move to actual revenue discussions, I'll also invite Dave Anderson, Alex Jiang to join in and talk about some of the revenues that the Budget Office is still responsible for forecasting. And with that, I'm just going to dive in, share the screen with our PowerPoint presentation. Going to move relatively quickly, given the time. Happy to be flagged to stop if there are questions. But here we go, so. So real quick, we're going to start with a brief update on how the economy has changed since April when we did our initial forecast for this year. And we'll talk about what the national and regional economic forecasts are looking like, so sort of a look forward. And then lastly, what are the implications of those forecasts on our specific predictions for revenues here in the city? Both for this year and 2022, but then also for 2023 and 2024, the upcoming biennium. Headline news in terms of the economy isn't surprised you. It's, it's been a lot about inflation. And also the Federal Reserve's response to inflation and the potential impact that, that raising interest rates, which has been the Fed's response, will have on, on the economy. Currently, we're in sort of an odd spot. We've actually seen the GDP, the total productivity of the US economy decline for two quarters. And at the same time, the, the employment market remains strong. We just saw 500,000 jobs created nationwide in July. So the kind of mixed messages about what's going on here, all a product of an economy emerging out of a pandemic on the face of it. So looking forward, key question is going to be, how does that balance strike? As the Fed moves to cool things off by raising rates, are they able to do that, bring down inflation without, without having a negative impact on jobs and on, on job growth? At one point, I want to make, as I move on here, is in the forecast that you'll see, the baseline forecast, which ultimately is the basis for our, our revenue numbers, it had anticipated much of the recent news. So about the economy, it had anticipated that the, the second quarter GDP would decline. So that, although that was not good news, it wasn't a surprise relative to the forecast that we, we are working with. Similarly, the Fed responded with a second in a row, three quarter percent interest rate increase. So significant increases in, in the, in the Fed rate, and those were also anticipated. So that some of the recent bad news is baked in, if you will. Just to illustrate how inflation has taken off and how it's become a dominant force. This graphic shows you, at least initially here, this was the expected path of inflation when we gave you a revenue forecast last November with the adopted budget. Anticipation is that inflation would peak at about 5% and would already be well in decline. That was revised when we did the April forecast. At that point, if you recall, inflation had spiked particularly in January and February. But still, the expectation is that it would come down quickly. And that was really a universal expectation at that time. As we deliver the current forecast, the expectations around inflation and the reality around inflation has shifted out and up again. So we are now have national rates above 9%. But notice that the continued expectation is that the Fed's actions will work, if you will, and that inflation will drop relatively quickly. We may have seen the first data point of that, so the inflation number for July was below that for June. But the expectation is the Fed's actions will be effective and that by the middle of next year, in, inflation will be back below 4% and onto a kind of a long-term trend closer to 2%. So, and that's again, that's consistent with the Fed's approach. So the expectation is the Fed will raise interest rates in some ways to make this so, with potential implications for employment. But, but that is the expectation and, and that's what's reflected in the forecast. In terms of employment, locally, we haven't reached full recovery from the pandemic. The, the red line here in this graphic shows you the total number of jobs that remain lost, if you will, relative to the pre-pandemic levels. It's about 20,000 jobs. It's about 1% of the regional employment levels. But the other thing that this graphic shows you, and this is a really important point, is that the job recovery has been very uneven. If you look down to the bottom and to the right, professional services, information, trade, which is a lot of the online retail trade is represented there. Those, those sectors have actually increased their total employment since the beginning of the pandemic. So we have been growing in those areas strongly and it's been buoying the local economy. At the same time, leisure and hospitality and manufacturing, which Russ is principally Boeing, continue to lag. So the, the hotel, restaurant, and other aspects of leisure and hospitality have not fully recovered. Um, good news on that front is that the summer tourist season appears quite strong. We, we have data showing the number of visitors into the downtown area. And then again, it's not back to pre-pandemic levels, but, but looking strong. We do have some concern going forward about the, the role of the tech sector and whether it will continue to be as strong a force. So this graphic, the red line is showing employment growth in the, in the trade, information, and professional business sectors, which really capture the technology employment. And what they show is that since 2011, so the last 10 years plus, we've seen essentially five to six to even 7% annual growth in employment in those sectors, high-paying jobs in those sectors. The blue line is the region's growth in those same, same jobs, and it's also been very strong. But what's, and Seattle is included in that blue line. So what's apparent is that we have been leading, the city has been leading that regional growth in employment. And that's consistent. We've seen this. We've seen Amazon, Facebook, Apple, the like, increasing their presence here in the city. But there's an open question about whether that, that level of growth is going to be sustained into the future. And there's at least some initial data and some anecdote that suggests otherwise. So in particular, this chart from the PSRC, the Puget Sound Regional Council, tracks employment down to a municipal level. And what it shows for 2021 is the first evidence that employment growth in these sectors has dropped off in the city. And with it, it's pulled the region down as well. Now, currently, because of the work from home issues and the like, tracking employment by location is a tricky thing to do. So I describe these as preliminary data, but they are consistent with the anecdotal information we've heard from large tech employers about hiring slowdowns or freezes and also their investments in facilities on the east side of the lake. So as we think about the Seattle economy going forward, specific to the city, this information is certainly influenced our thinking about long-term growth. And as you'll see, growth in the, the payroll expense tax revenues. So a, a piece of the overall picture here. Shifting, let's talk about the national and regional forecasts looking forward. So what are the, what are folks predicting about the economy and how have those predictions changed in, in recent months? So again, this is a graphic that's designed to contract the, the national economy. It focuses specifically on employment. There are other metrics you could use, but if you do, you'd see similar patterns. So what you see here, again, and this is the expectation is the forecast from October, when we were developing the forecast that the budget, this year's budget were based on. You can see there had been a dramatic drop in employment because of the pandemic. And the expectation was of growth continuing and then modestly into the future. Excuse me, that, that was revised slightly and only slightly when we brought you the April forecast. Principally, what happened there is that things were going a little better in the near term. So you'll see the employment forecast went up at a national level in the near term, and then was approximately the same in the longer term. So things had, on the employment front, had been looking up. The more recent forecasts indicate that, that things, that a slower recovery is what's expected into next year and, and beyond. So near term, again, we're still seeing strong employment growth. Again, I just mentioned those strong numbers from July. But given that the Fed is working hard now to raise interest rates and cool things down in an effort to bring down inflation, the expectation is that job growth will be much, much more sedate into 24 and into 25. And that again will affect, and you'll see this effect in our revenue forecast. So again, on average, expectation of slower growth going forward. The other issue that's emerged in the national economy and in those forecasts is an increasing risk of, of, of a recession. So our, the national forecast firm gives us three scenarios, a baseline, an optimistic, and a pessimistic. The darker line here is the, the, is that forecast again, from July, of what the pessimistic scenario would look like. And rather than seeing kind of the relatively weak but, but present job growth in the baseline forecast, in the, in the pessimistic forecast, we'd actually see job losses as the economy would enter a recession. And an important point is that relative to our last forecast, the probability that's assigned to this, to this possible scenario has increased. So they went from thinking that this could be a 35% probability to a 45% probability. So in some sense, you know, they're, they're showing us two scenarios and only putting a slightly higher probability on, on the baseline. Now again, since then, we've had the strong job numbers and some other things. And actually, we recently, as actually earlier this week, got a slightly revised forecast. And the pessimistic scenario isn't quite as bleak, but nonetheless, its probability still holds at 45%. So there is still a concern that as the Fed takes its actions, that we could tip into a recessionary environment. And if you look to the region, you see a similar story. So these are same graphs at a regional level. That's employment. As we saw it back in October, it looked better in April. Again, near term, we were seeing stronger job growth, same expectation for the long run. But now more recently, the things have cooled some, so we've seen slower job growths near term. And then again, for the long run, I think it is important to note that the slope of the slide, that the rate of job growth relative to the nation, again, because this is a regional forecast, is still strong. We're still expecting the region to return to a period of growth. And our growth has generally outpaced the, the, the national economy. So two or three years out, expecting a return to a pattern more similar to we've seen pre-pandemic. But again, again, this is a graphic showing that on a regional level, what the pessimistic scenario look like, looks like. And it too, which would represent a significant recession and a drop in employment. So having, we're just now almost to pre, pre-pandemic levels in employment. This, this chart is measuring relative to, to the pre-pandemic levels. And if, if the pessimistic scenario were to emerge, we would see layoffs again and regional employment drop. Certainly not as badly as in the pandemic, but, but notably as well. We also, and then we take several years to, to recover. I see there's a question and I'm happy to take it or to wait. I'll defer to the chair.
Uh, Kev, not Herbold?
Happy to wait. I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Let's have you first in the queue.
So I want to stop a moment to talk about the recommendation we made among the scenarios and, and the actions that the Forecast Council took. So one of the key things we do is to make a recommendation about which of scenarios should be the, should form the basis for the forecast. And as I described, it's, it's a difficult choice now because the probabilities assigned to, to each of the pessimistic and the baseline are essentially the same. That said, and it's the reason I made the point earlier, the baseline forecast does actually incorporate a lot of the, of the concerns that we have. So it anticipated that second quarterly decline in GDP. It anticipated the current actions of the Fed, so which were really remarkable. Two three-quarter point increases back to back, something we hadn't seen in, in decades. But the baseline forecast anticipates yet further increases from the Fed. So it's, it anticipated the current ones and is expecting things going forward. And then also, there has been some good news, both on the jobs front, so strong employment numbers for July. And the inflation figure did drop relative to June. It, it's only one month and dangerous to assume a trend from that. But overall, that, th- those factors led us to be more comfortable with the baseline scenario. And that was our recommendation to the Forecast Council, and they concurred on that recommendation at their August 8th meeting. So as I move now to talk about the revenues themselves, these are the, consistent with that baseline forecast that we showed you, which again is continued, but, but more modest growth in both the regional and national economy. Uh, before I do the specifics of the revenue uh revenue figures, I do want to make one more general point about uh inflation and its impact on, on particularly around general fund revenues. Um, one might generally assume that as prices are going up as, as inflation takes effect, if you will, that, that our revenues would grow with it, you know, where many of our taxes like sales tax um and B and O tax um apply to the value of, of activity and therefore our, our revenues would, would be going up with them. What's tricky is that that's not generally true of all of our revenue streams. And this, this pie chart is designed to illustrate that point. So the things in yellow and, and, and shades of yellow are in fact revenues that do generally grow with inflation. So I just mentioned sales and B and O. Those are percentage taxes on sales and, and general business activity. Um, you know, inflation itself may have an impact on, you know, the total activities uh in those areas. But uh, but our, our taxes will grow as the level of activity grows. And private utilities generally um are increasing their, uh, their rates to cover their costs. So reasonable to expect that our taxes on those, those services would also grow as inflation. But it's really critically important to understand that it's not true of all of our revenue sources. And in particular, property tax, which represents almost twenty five percent of our, our revenues, um, are constrained to grow at well less than current inflation. So property tax by state law can grow by one percent uh plus the value of new construction. For us in recent years, that has amounted to about two, maybe in a good year, two and a half percent. When inflation was running at about two or two and a half percent, that was okay. We, we weren't losing ground. But as, as inflation has spiked, property, that share of our revenue stream is losing ground. And it will continue to lose ground as long as inflation stays high. Um, the things that are in shades of green are, are, are areas and, and portions of our revenue stream in total about a quarter again. Um, where there's a, there's a mix here. Um, some of these things do generally go up with inflation, but it'll depend in part on actions um of the city council, uh, among others. So in particular, the taxes on City Light and SPU um will increase a- as their rates uh and, and as demand increases. Um, but uh, if you, if efforts are taken to, to protect rate payers by keeping uh rate increases below inflation, the net effect of that could be to reduce general fund revenues. That's not a reason to increase those rates, but rather for you to understand what the implications are um in terms of our overall revenue growth. Um, similarly, the lighter green permit fees, service charges, um, those again are areas where, you know, the city is um charging folks for one service or another. Um, and those rates are set by policy. Uh, and again, you may want to be protecting folks from the impact of inflation by keeping increases there low. Um, the effect of that though will be to reduce the revenues that we are earning and to degree. Um, and they may not be catch, then keeping up with uh inflation. So the general point here is that as inflation goes up, there's a structural issue and the general fund won't inherently keep up. Um, and you're, the purchasing power uh of the general fund will be declining. Um, again, the current forecasts are that inflation will come down quickly. Um, so and, and hopefully that's the case. If not, this could become um a bigger issue. It is, by the way, the underlying uh challenge for the, for King County. Um, they've faced a series of budget uh challenges over the years. And that's because a greater share of their revenues come from property tax and are not keeping up generally with inflation. A, a structural challenge for them. So want to move now to actually talk about the revenue uh forecast and how things have changed. Um, uh, this is a chart that focuses just on this year, on twenty twenty two. Um, the highlighting, the blue versus not blue is a distinction between the revenue streams that are forecasted by the forecast office versus the budget office. So I'm going to speak to the things in blue and then turn it over to Dave and, and Alex, talk a little bit about um things that are in white, if you will. Um, just in terms of reading the chart, uh, the first column of numbers is the twenty one actuals. Put there as a reference point, so you can see how things are changing relative to that. Second column is the twenty two adopted budget. So those are the forecasts that were made um in November, October and November. Um, April then are the revised forecast from last time. Um, the twenty two August forecast are the most current. So these are, those are the new numbers we're showing you today. And then the final column is showing you the change um between uh August and April. So what's changed since we were last here with you? Um, and I'm just going to work my way down this chart to give you a highlight of this. The next slide will show you twenty two and twenty three. Um, property taxes are generally very predictable, so um no real change here. These are in thousands, so that's a, that's thirty here and that final column represents a thirty thousand dollar change. So minor, minor change in property taxes. Retail sales um forecast is up um, both reflecting the impact of inflation just in terms of, uh, prices being higher overall. And also, I think as we showed you, um, the local economy did somewhat better in the near term than we had anticipated. The decline in business and occupation tax i- is lesser reflection of anything changing the economy. Uh, and more um that there, there have been changes in the way certain taxpayers pay their B and O taxes, shifting from annual um to quarterly payments. This made it a little challenging for us to track the, the baseline. So this is really us um getting a better handle on the, the baseline revenues for, for B and O. Um, and you'll see that that does ripple into the future. Uh, private utility side, um, uh, small change, um, natural gas prices um uh being up, have pushed that up somewhat. Um, uh, the cable forecast up slightly as well. Um, I'm going to shift now, turn this over to Dave and to Alex to talk a little about some of these other revenue streams. And then I'll return at the end to talk about the final line, which is a significant one in this table.
Great. Thank you, Ben. Uh, good morning, still morning. Um, carrying on then, so utility taxes, the public utility taxes, that's Seattle City Light, Seattle Public Utilities, you know, water, sewage and solid waste. You see a slight decline. Uh, the decline is uh really a combination and netting of effects from the various uh utility funds. Uh, but the big movers um are uh Seattle City Light is up a bit. Um, they're, they're selling more retail electricity than, than previously thought in April. Um, and the big mover is water down because we've had such a cool, although it may not feel like it recently, but we've had, we had a cool spring uh and, and therefore water usage was less. Um, and so they've revised that forecast down for that net change of about a million dollars down. Um, other city taxes, these are things like leasehold excise tax, the tonnage taxes paid by transferring solid waste at our transfer stations, gambling tax, heating oil, things like this. Um, you can see that there is a uh decline of about two million dollars. Uh, that is largely comprised of uh reductions in tonnage tax and uh the heating oil tax. In April, we had the heating oil taxes carrying on, but it was uh, you all had, had changed it so that it was not effective until one, one, twenty twenty three. So we've removed about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that from twenty twenty two. Um, and then uh, uh, you know, I said, I think I said leasehold excise taxes, they were up a bit. And so the net effect there is about a two million dollar decline overall. Parking meters is up one point five million. This is largely due to uh the rates still, still climbing, still being moved forward by S dot's uh slow but steady process of evaluating paid occupancy and raising rates in those areas and neighborhoods where, where it's uh warranted. Um, they have a, a few of those rate uh evaluations uh scheduled for this year. And this forecast includes those rate in uh potential increases. Um, but paid occupancy right now is um, th- this is not a projection so much. It's, it's an actual fact. Paid occupancy right now is at or near pay, pre pandemic levels. So uh, so there's a lot of areas that will be increased because they're already at those levels and um, and they'll go from there. Um, court fines is a, is a uh interesting and, and somewhat complicated story. Uh, citation volumes for parking citations are maintaining. So those are the ones written by parking enforcement officers, and those are sort of at pre pandemic levels of about five hundred and fifty thousand. Um, but other citations for um, you know, driving while intoxicated or moving violations. Uh, those are down uh largely uh due to the, they, they are generated by patrol officers. And as you are aware, there's um staffing and priority prioritization questions going on there. So those revenues are down from those types of citations. And then we had the situation with the voiding of two hundred thousand citations. Um, and the refunds being given for those. And so uh, the court fines number here in twenty twenty two reflects that reduction. Um, and then there's some other uh, other forecasting type of ju- uh adjustments that we've made to reflect uh slightly slower payment expectations. Um, and then there is a uh, an accounting adjustment of sorts of about three point three million dollars here. Uh, that is uh, uh, accounting, accounting rules uh was incorporating into the revenues an amount uh that reflected a portion of unpaid citations that would be in collections. And so we've determined that's not actually a, a cash revenue. And, and so we're removing that from the forecast. It's not dollars available to spend. It's a, it's a projection for accounting purposes. It'll affect the balance sheet, but not the cash available. Um, um, moving on grants, I think uh the large change, thirty nine point nine million dollar change there. Uh, this is largely due to us um uh, including um the uh uh carry forwards and things like that into the grant category that um, and I don't know, Ben, if you wanted to say more about that in, in your remarks or what have you. But uh, you'll see a line down below that's carry forward grants and legislated changes of about forty point seven million in April. Those are being added to April because we failed to include those uh carry forward grants in the April number. And, but they are included in the August numbers. And so to try and present an apples to apples comparison here, we've got that sort of presented on two different lines. The bottom line right above the, the shaded blue line uh and then in the grants category. Fund balance transfers, uh, this is largely due to a four point three million dollar change in where we are posting a, a um, a, a transfer. Uh, this is CRF money and it was scheduled to be booked into the general fund, but instead it's being booked directly into the HSD fund. Um, licenses, permits and other, not much change there. Um, and then I just explained the carry forward and grant line item. So Ben, do you want to?
Yeah, so.
Talk about payroll expense tax.
Yeah, last item is the uh perhaps unusual uh entry for uh payroll tax, late twenty twenty one payroll tax payments. So what's happened here is that again, the payroll tax was first came into effect for last year, for twenty twenty one. Um, and payments were due i- in January uh of this year, so a one time annual payment. Uh, this year, folks are making uh quarterly estimated payments. But it's apparent that a number of firms were um struggling with how to come into compliance and, 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 and understand whether they were affected by the tax. And we've continued to get um payments uh for twenty twenty one obligations through this year. Um, actually, and as recently as last month, so actually, I think even this month. Um, so in total, we've collected an additional almost forty two million dollars in twenty twenty one payments. As a um, as a technical matter, we can't, in an accounting matter, they have to be recorded as twenty twenty two revenues because they've come in as late as they have. Uh, city ordinance um dictates that the twenty twenty one payroll expense tax revenues uh go into the general fund. So these are a- as shown here, general fund revenues. Um, going forward, the payroll expense tax for, for twenty twenty two and beyond, twenty, the payroll expense tax revenues are in their own separate fund. But um, these are being, uh, since these are twenty one obligations, they're being directed into the general fund. Um, and it's, I think it's important to recognize that from that perspective, there are one time general fund resource of the uh payroll expense tax will show you the forecast going forward, but going forward, it won't be into the general fund. Um, this does imply um, in April, we told you that the final numbers for payroll expense tax in twenty twenty one was about two hundred, two hundred and forty eight million. Uh, with this, it turns out that, that the actual total payments for twenty twenty one are uh closer to two hundred or just above two hundred and ninety million. Um, and understanding that that's the base has, has again affected our forecast. Um, you'll see that we have uh s- significant concern and actually at this point, don't expect that we'll match that figure in twenty twenty one, in twenty twenty two. And we'll explain why, but um, for this year, um, this is a very significant um increase in revenues one time. And as you'll see, uh, in that sort of adding up the total here in the far right column, um, it's helped us significantly offset some of the reductions that we're seeing relative um to the April forecast. So that's twenty twenty two, um, looking ahead to twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. And again, let me orient you in this table. The first column here of figures is the twenty two, is the revised forecast for uh twenty, for twenty twenty two for this year. Put there as reference, so you can see how things change um year to year. Next, in the center section here, we're looking at the twenty twenty three forecasts, that the initial forecast from April are this first uh, the middle columns, the second is the revised, so the new numbers for twenty twenty three. And then again, the difference here um in the uh, on the right, within that, that center portion. And then on the, on the right side of the table, the same information for twenty twenty four, the April forecast, the revised August forecast and the difference. And again, I had a relatively high clip, I'm a, I will go through and talk about the changes um from the forecast office perspective and then turn to Dave um on the others. Um, again, property tax, uh, only small changes, we, grows at one percent plus value of new construction. So those things are, are uh not, are pretty stable forecast. Um, uh, uh, we're seeing some evidence of uh, uh, somewhat higher new construction value than we anticipated in part because the concrete strike did not have as much of a downward effect as we thought it might. Um, retail sales um up again in nominal terms for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, a reduction relative to April. Because again, we, as we saw, the longer term forecast show that the economy grows um uh less than uh we had anticipated uh back in April. Business and occupation tax, um, again, we're come to a better understanding about what the base is. So this downward adjustment is consistent with what we saw before and the lower growth, again, consistent with um uh, the revised uh regional forecast uh that shows um an overall cooling. Um, private utility taxes, again, up somewhat, um, natural gas, a big, a big piece of that. Um, also uh cable is holding up a little better than we had thought. Telephone continues to decline um somewhat faster than we had thought. Um, but again, uh, basically the, the overall patterns that we, that we see in twenty two uh continue into twenty three and twenty four, um, acknowledging that uh, an anticipation of slower overall growth. Dave?
Thank you. Um, and I would uh reiterate that point for the, for the, the CBO forecasted amounts too. A lot of those amounts are just, we've adjusted the base in twenty twenty two. A lot of the same factors apply, and so that's carrying across. The one I would like to point out is where there is a change is licenses, permits and interest income uh and other. Uh, and that's a drop of about three point three million dollars in each year. Um, and uh, that is largely due to um changes in business license expectations. Um, and then there's a reduction in uh emergency services E nine one one reimbursements um coming to uh uh, the um, was the police department now? It's, I'm blanking on the name. I'm sorry. Um, uh, CSCC, I think is what it's called. Um, and so they, they've, that's a, a decision they, they're making about how to use those resources. And, and so there's a reduction there. Um, and then there's some lesser adjustments as well. Um, uh, assumed um uh, commercial parking licenses and then a slight decline in interest earnings uh based on expectations of lowering uh cash balances uh for the general fund.
Okay, I'm going to encourage us to get to um pages eighteen, night, and, excuse me, eighteen and nineteen so that we can um get into questions and that will leave us with about forty five minutes for the last presentation as well. I want to thank in advance the folks from um the city budgets office as well who have offered to come to our next meeting on September seventh to do a report out on our quarterly American Rescue Plan, Seattle Rescue Plan uh expenses. So we will add that item to our agenda for September seventh, which just leaves us with concluding this item, agenda item number four. And then we'll spend the last forty five minutes on agenda item number five.
Right, I'll move very quickly here. So net effect here is a reduction of about six and a half million for the twenty three forecast and just over eleven million for the twenty twenty four forecast. The only other point I would make about this graphic is the percentage changes at the very bottom here, annual growth, just highlighting that um, that relative to twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three is actually a reduction in the resources available in general fund. And the reason for that is principally this one, the, the, the fund balance transfers. And the twenty twenty two budget relies significantly on transfers. That's not going to continue necessarily into twenty twenty three, and that's among the things that's creating some of the challenges. Shift um real quick here to talk about um the, the general, the other revenues that we forecasted are not um, they're not in the general fund, but which are very significant. The largest of those is the payroll expense tax and I'm, spend a little bit of time here. Um, so as I indicated, um, the, the twenty twenty one actuals, as we understood them at, at the time, was two hundred and forty eight million. As we just indicated, there's been about uh an additional forty million, forty two million paid in. So the base for the, for the payroll tax, as we understand it for twenty twenty one, is two hundred and ninety million. Um, the, the budget, the forecast that we had for twenty twenty two was, was less than that. It was two hundred and seventy seven million, um, but that was a forecast that was at the time based on almost no information. As of April, we knew the twenty one numbers. We hadn't seen any payments for twenty twenty two. We have now seen quarterly payments from the first and second quarter. Um, and those are just not keeping pace with the, the, the twenty twenty one figures. So we have, um, the forecast that we have for twenty twenty two um is 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 actually somewhat higher than the revised forecast is somewhat higher than we have in April. But we've got there in a very different way. We now understand that the base is bigger than we thought. But but we also think that payments for twenty twenty two will be less than they were in twenty twenty one. And in a minute, we'll talk about why that's the case. Otherwise, admissions tax, only very small change, real estate excise tax, good performance in the first half, so upping that forecast for the rest of this year. And then the sales tax for the transportation benefit district just follows the overall sales tax forecast. Think otherwise, Dave, I'm gonna do these just real quick, minor changes in either in both sweet and beverage and short term rental, just based on current performance. Looking to twenty two and twenty three. Again, the payroll expense tax. You'll see that the forecast is somewhat lower than we showed you in April. The reason here is that in addition to us thinking we're not going to hit the same level of activity in twenty twenty one. Given the forecast we've seen, we're expecting less job growth in this in the sectors that are really that are principally responsible. So we're expecting somewhat slower growth. Net effect here is relatively small, but but that's what's driving it. Real estate excise tax, just jumping ahead to an area where there's significant change. Again, we've seen really strong performance in twenty twenty two. We expect less net revenue in twenty three and twenty twenty four as interest rates start to cool up the real estate market. But. But those. We're still not anticipating to reach the the current levels. I think commercial parking taxes probably was a comment, Dave, in terms of other changes.
Go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, good morning. So commercial parking tax is primarily reflecting what's going on in the new regional economic outlook, which has been revised down. From April, particularly starting in twenty twenty three. And so we're expecting that activity to still return to pre pandemic levels, just at a slower pace.
And just as a last point, some further comments about the payroll expense tax and why it is we're forecasting less revenue in twenty twenty two than we saw in twenty twenty one. So again, on net twenty one, as we understand it now, it's a base of two hundred and ninety million. We're forecasting about two hundred and seventy eight million for next year. And one of the reasons for that is, again, we're seeing lower payments, excuse me, for this year, we're seeing lower payments for the first two quarters this year. We think a significant explanation for that is the stock values of the large tech companies declining. A lot of the compensation that's paid to folks in these companies is based on stock grants and the value of those grants on the face of it is declining. Another issue that we're monitoring is the the way people assign workers to offices. And the impacts of work from home, which may also have the effect of reducing, reducing tax obligations. So we spent a lot of time thinking about this. We don't have a ton of data. So this is, this forecast is one that's. More a judgment call than it is based on hard data, but. The results through the mid of middle of this year indicate that we're not likely to see the performance of twenty twenty one. And again, we think these are the explanations. So that wraps up. The. Our our presentation. And I know there were questions, so I'm gonna maybe leave slides up, anticipating there may be a question about a specific slide.
Thank you, Council. Okay, let me try that again. Let me try that again. We're working? Okay, sorry, old habits to hit the unmute button on the Zoom here. Apologies for the feedback. Council member Herbl, do you have your hand raised? Please go ahead.
Thank you. I have a question about the continued use of the baseline. Economic scenario, as as we heard in your report, the probability of the pessimistic forecast has increased from a thirty five percent. Probability in April to forty five percent probability, just a few short months later in August. And so despite that shift, the forecast continues to use the baseline forecast. You guys are the experts in this in this work, and I know I've I've pursued this line of questioning in the past and. Your forecasting has been. On the mark, but I'm just wondering from sort of a a matter of practice. Is there a percentage of proper probability that forecasting experts use to shift from a baseline to a pessimistic? Is it, is it, you know, one percent over fifty percent or?
Yeah, that's a really good question. It's important to understand the way the forecast, the national forecast work. Actually, the pessimistic forecast will never be above fifty one. It would then become the baseline. So by construct, so what we and we have employed.
I didn't understand that.
We have, yeah. We we have employed the pessimistic forecast in the past, in particular, when the most recently, when in beginning of twenty twenty, when the the pandemic hit. And there were, at the time, there were two particular reasons for that. One is, we were hit first, if you recall. So we had significant concern that that a national forecast, which is really where these probabilities come from, weren't weren't reflecting our risks because we were in a different situation. In retrospect, I think, as it turned out, we also responded more aggressively, and that was another reason to use a pessimistic forecast aggressively from a public health perspective. That was hard to know then. The other was the concern was that our economy, the components of our economy were potentially more, potentially going to be more impacted by the the pandemic than the nation as a whole. So again, the idea was that the national baseline probably wasn't reflective of our then risks. Looking now, we don't have that sense, you know, that the we were feeling that, you know, our exposure is not unlike that of the nation. And the other, and I swear that I harped on it earlier, is that the baseline forecast is also not not a terribly rosy one. It's and it has anticipated a lot of, you know, if they hadn't anticipated the GDP decline, if they hadn't been anticipating the rate increases. And so the baseline wasn't reflective of current conditions, that would have been a reason to shift away, but it is reflective on the face of it. But a discussion related to this that we had with the Forecast Council is that we're going to continue to watch this. We are, we are for sure going to bring you an update to the beginning of November, late October, beginning of November. But if things were to change dramatically and the implication was a downward revision in the forecast. That's something that we might want to bring to you earlier, so that as a as a deliberative body at the city council and engage in discussion with the executive. Could potentially respond as you engage in the budget process and not have to make changes at the very last, if you will. So we're going to continue to keep an eye on that. And if things. Were to deteriorate further, we'd reach back before November. And and then we worked out some timelines about when we could begin some of that work in late September, early October, if that that proved appropriate. But again, responding to exactly the question in the scenario that that you're concerned about.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing additional questions, and I know this is just the precursor, the grounding for the next item on the agenda. So I want to thank Director Noble, and I want to thank my colleagues as well. This is the conversation that's really focused on the revenue projections. The next item on our agenda is the overall health of the general fund and a preview for our fall budget. Where we will have the general fund financial plan item on our agenda. So please keep your questions for Director Noble focused on the revenue projections only. I see one more question from Councilmember Peterson before we move on.
Thank you, Councilmember Muscata. Thank you, Chair. And thank you for this presentation. Thank, I appreciate you breaking out the history, the recent history of the new jumpstart payroll tax and the difference. You know, in that what was part of the general fund and then what, when we created a separate fund for the the payroll tax. The, in terms of what would be the baseline for that payroll tax, I guess what I'm looking to is what were the expectations? And it looks like, I just want to confirm my numbers here. So twenty twenty two adopted budget. So we adopted this in November. Estimated receive. Two, that was about two hundred and thirty three million. Was what we adopted last November as our estimate for the twenty twenty two jumpstart revenues. Is that correct? Two hundred and thirty three million?
Yeah, almost two hundred and thirty four. And I I could put that slide up if you want or or not.
No, that's, I was just trying to ground myself in what were the expectations of how much we would be getting, and it sounds like we're exceeding that. Exceeding it for different reasons. But just, there's good news on that front, at least with that payroll tax.
Yes, as I described, it's certainly twenty twenty one. Outperformed our forecast. It's very difficult. In defense, it's very difficult to forecast revenue stream without any experience and with limited data. Certainly was good news. If I'm making, if I made it sort of extra effort, it was to explain why we're not convinced that that all that good news will continue into into. Into the future and and then actually that last year, even this year's revenues won't match last year's. And the key data point for that is is that halfway through the year, we're seeing that payments aren't at a pace to match the the payments from last year. And we're trying to understand why that is the case. And what we see is the stock value change, and we also see some shift. To a model where people are only reporting the hours worked in the city and not assuming that the the full, full employment, if you will, was happening in the city.
But your estimate for twenty twenty three is higher than two hundred and thirty three million. Adopted.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great.
We were, we were off on the base. So we had expected two hundred million and we were expecting to grow to two hundred and thirty million this year. As it turns out, we got two hundred and nine, two hundred and ninety million, but we're actually now expecting it to fall slightly in this year. And then and then modestly grow after that. But but we also know that we don't have a good handle on this revenue stream. And for instance, you know, to the extent that that stock value is driving compensation. You know, if I was really good at predicting stock values, I might have a different job. So that's going to be a challenge going forward. But again, with every year and every quarter, we'll gain a better understanding of of how this works.
I think this is a really good segue, Councilmember Peterson, and your points well taken. I think it will be a good segue into the upcoming presentation from central staff as well. So I want to encourage folks, if they'd like additional details, we did walk through this in about two and a half hours in our, in our. Revenue Forecast Council meeting last Monday, so that information is also archived on Seattle Channel from the eighth of August. Thank you very much to the Office of Economic Revenue Forecast and the City Budgets Office for this walkthrough. This is helpful ground setting as we move into the next agenda item. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number five into the record?
Agenda item number five, general fund, general fund financial plan update for briefing and discussion.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Okay, colleagues, we do have the last half of the meeting here. We are going, the last part of the meeting here, we're going to put together the rest of the puzzle pieces. Councilmember Peterson started to see some questions about possible revenue. And the Office of Economic and Revenue Forecast painted a pretty grim picture from our April and August forecast. The changes in the forecast are going to have a significant impact on the available revenue to the city. As the mayor considers drafting his budget and transmitting that to council, we are very interested in working together. To make sure that we have a solid financial plan to address the growing needs in the city and also to make sure that we have the revenue to fulfill those needs. Colleagues, we're about to see an overall picture of how our budget over the course of the next several years. Will work with the assumptions from the revenue forecast information that was presented last week. Again, I want to thank not only Office of Revenue Forecast, but also the City Budgets Office and our own central staff, who've been diligently working over the last week and a half. To look at the forecast information, factor in our expenses from the city. And look towards how we're creating a more sustainable, stable and transparent budget. So today's conversation will have an opportunity to ask questions at the end of the presentation. And I'm going to also save my comments about how I am looking at various solutions to addressing the budget deficit. That is going to be outlined here in the central staff's presentation after they conclude their comments. We know that the looming budget discussion that we will have in just over a month from now is the biggest issue many of us are working on collectively addressing. To make sure that we close this gap and provide critical services to our community residents, small businesses, workers, and to ensure that we're investing in the growth of our local economy as well. Because the legislative branch holds the purse, we have the final say on the proposed budget for the upcoming years. We will also be very interested in not only the presentation in front of us today, but I want to make sure that we are setting. An important course for how we continue to try to address this in the most humane and humanitarian way possible to make sure that we not only prevent against austerity. But make key investments into our economy, our workers and our smallest businesses. So with that. If I could turn it over to central staff to walk us through the financial plan. This is a general fund revenue update and the financial plan as presented by our city budget office and central staff. So Ally Pinucci and Tom Mike sell from central staff are here, and I believe we also have with us Director Julie Dingly. For maybe some input as well and any questions folks have. Okay, please go ahead, Tom and Ally.
Thank you. I'm just going to share my screen. Are you seeing my presentation?
We are.
Great. So good morning, Chairman Muscata and committee members. I'm Ally Pinucci from the central staff team, and I'm joined by my colleague Tom Mike sell and Director Dingly from the city budget office. I'm just going to go ahead and jump in in the interest of time and ensure we have. Time for discussion. So I'll let them introduce themselves when we turn to them in the presentation. So I will briefly walk through what we're going to cover today. Then we'll turn it over to Tom Mike sell for more details. And then to Director Dingly, who will provide additional updates and context for the committee's consideration before returning to a discussion of some potential strategy.
Great, thank you very much. And just as a reminder, I mentioned this at the top of the meeting today. For this item, agenda number five, you can find both the PowerPoint presentation and the central staff memo. By going to the Finance and Housing Committee Agenda link, click on Meeting Details in Legistar. And there you will be able to find the meeting details that will link to agenda item number five's. Supporting documents when you click on that agenda item. So if any members of the community are interested in finding out, please do email us and we will try to send you the direct link. But you can also find it under Meeting Details and click on Agenda Item Number Five. Please go ahead, Ally.
Thank you, Chairman Muscata. So today, as you described, we will present an updated financial plan for the general fund as context and advance of transmittal of the mayor's proposed twenty three and twenty four budget. That will be sent to the council on September twenty seventh. This update reflects the August revenue forecast for the general fund that was just presented by the Forecast Office and the City Budget Office. An updated expenditure in information that includes what is estimated to be increased general fund expenditures. Based on the future estimated cost of continuing the ongoing. Programs that were funded in the twenty twenty two adopted budget as well as changes. To the planning reserve assumptions provided by the city budget office and any supplemental budget adjustments made since the May fourth discussion. As the chair just described, and you heard in the previous agenda item, and we'll see in the subsequent slides. Both the mayor and the council are faced with preparing a balanced budget under less than ideal conditions and uncertainty about the future. As noted, the plan presented today serves as the starting point for the mayor. And we look forward on central staff to working with the council after transmittal of that proposal to determine if it is consistent with the policy direction set by the legislative body. And if not, work with you all to develop a final city budget for twenty twenty three that reflects your priorities. With that, I'll turn it over to Tom to walk through this in more detail.
Thank you, Deputy Director Pinucci. I'm Tom Mike sell. With your central staff. Good morning to Finance and Housing Committee members as well. So the Ally fairly well touched on this initial outline screen, kind of give the broad context. So I'll just dive into some important caveats for the committee to keep in mind as we talk through the updated numbers. So the plan that we'll share today includes expenditure growth in twenty three through twenty six to reflect the impact inflation on continuing twenty twenty two adopted budget services. The presentation shows this information differently than how CBO casts it in their their financial plans that they include in the budget. However, the underlying data and the inflation assumptions are the same as what CBO is currently using. It does include baseline growth and expenditures to continue twenty twenty two services. But it's really just the starting point for any policy proposals that may be considered. In the mayor's proposed balanced budget coming in September. Next slide. So I guess to reiterate, the numbers do not include any policies or programs that were adopted as one time in twenty twenty two. So they were only only expected to begin and end in in the current year. They don't include any policy related additions. But they also do not represent a foregone conclusion. Council has the jurisdiction over all. But they also do not represent a foregone conclusion. Council has the jurisdiction over all elements of the city budget, including the baseline. So so while we'll cast these as sort of a a projection of a base, it's just an important to note as a caveat that that all elements, including those elements that we're discussing today, are part of the balancing picture and part of the budget that will be presented. But, but with that being said, this is the the final update of kind of the the ongoing twenty twenty-two service cost projection that that we will be able to, that we will present prior to receiving the mayor's proposed budget in September. So next slide, please. So the these next couple of slides are a graphical representation of information that was discussed in May when we first looked at the general fund financial plan. So now we're including graphs, kind of catching up with the twentieth century. So this shows in 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 these these basic lines showing in red the expenditure projection and in green the revenue projection that we looked at in May. The key, the key piece of detail here is the the operating gap. So that's the difference between the expenditure projection and the revenues that are projected to be available to support them next year and in future years in the plan. So back in May, that one of the headline numbers of this operating gap was the hundred and seventeen million dollar difference between revenues and expenditures in twenty twenty-three. So also based on that May information, that the the gap was was projected to to narrow in the future, as you can see by these kind of converging lines by twenty twenty-six, where the hundred and seventeen million dollar shrinks to a lower number. Unfortunately, updates that we'll talk about in 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 upcoming slides will show that that gap widens, but but that's what we were looking at with with those main numbers. Next slide. So the the under, the general fund ending unreserved fund balance is kind of the next critical metric in in considering an adopted budget. Essentially, this is the number that that determines whether a budget is balanced or not. So the ending unreserved unreserved balance for a legally adopted budget has to be zero or higher. So back in May, the projection for twenty twenty-three was a thirty-five million dollar negative ending unreserved general fund balance. This was, and that number grew to two hundred and forty-nine million dollar negative by twenty twenty-six. And this is entirely because of the the what was happening with projected revenues and expenditures and showed as shown in the prior slide. So in other words, the the neck, the ending unreserved fund balance got worse in future years because there was an ongoing gap between revenues and expenditures. So that's just the recap of May. Next couple of slides, I'm just going to include some of the new data that we have received from various partners to update these projections with the more recent data. So this slide is really just recapturing all of the all the work in detail that was just presented to you in the prior agenda item from the Forecast Office and the City Budget Office. And it just layers in and shows graphically the changes to from the the May forecast in the lighter blue line and the now August forecast in the darker blue line. The, actually, if we could go back to that that one slide. I just want to highlight a few points that are not really embedded, but they can kind of continue on the discussion from the Forecast Office in the prior agenda item, and that is with regards to the baseline and the pessimistic scenario. Again, it's it's an important point that the that the probability of the pessimistic scenario is higher, albeit somewhat lower than the baseline. But there's some useful information that committee that I would offer for the committee to keep in mind when considering that. One is due to recent action by the council, particularly in the supplemental budget legislation, the city's revenue stabilization fund, which is, which is sole purpose is to be in place in the event of economic news that that results in a revenue reduction is now fully funded. So that is an approximately sixty-two million dollars of available resource that helps mitigate some of the risk of of an economic shock. So that's good news. Also, some news to consider or some information is that on average in the past, city revenue forecasts have generally come in, have been lower than actual. So of course, a recession is is a surprise and 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 that would would challenge the baseline assumption. But on average, the forecasts have have resulted in when actual revenues have come in higher than forecasts. So so it's just, it's it's very important to notice and to to keep in mind the risk, but there also are some fiscal tools in the toolkit that are in place to help mitigate that.
And Tom, I just want to also note the appreciation for central staff and to highlight that it was this council, it was the previous Budget Committee in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one that really pushed back on trying to draw down those reserves even further than the comfort level that Seattle City Council had. So the previous administration at one point had suggested drawing down the reserves to near three million dollars. We really held the line on trying to preserve as much as possible and a really aggressive timeline to build back funding into the reserves and and to replenish that largely with with jumpstart investments. But we held true to those commitments and, as you noted, have succeeded in replenishing. And I I really think that that's an important thing to highlight. I'm glad you did, and it shows strong fiscal stewardship over our budget. I want to take this opportunity as well to thank our current administration and also the leadership of the City Budgets Office, Julie Dingly, for your partnership ongoing as we've continued to try to address these issues collaboratively and glad that we have these tools in our toolkit, as you noted.
Ally, if we could move to the the next slide. So these are the the high-level expenditure changes. So again, comparing May. So in this case, the May fourth plan with the new information in the baseline update provided by CBO shows that there is some fairly significant growth in the expenditure projections. So back in May, we actually were applying inflation adjustments to various categories. And in large part, those those inflation categories were were fairly successful in accommodating some of the cost growth. So then the next question is, why are these numbers higher? And the reason is generally two, two things. One, as as noted in the review of the baseline data, there was included additional cost for human services contracts. So in twenty nineteen, council adopted an ordinance that that it codified a requirement that human services contract would be inflated by CPI in future years. So notably in May, in the May update, it did not appear that human services contracts had been inflated according to the SMC requirement, so the Seattle Municipal Code requirement. So including those in the baseline and also in future years adds to a somewhat sizable increase in the cost above the projections that were provided in May. Another piece of the kind of unanticipated growth since May is increases in planning reserves. So these are the kind of below the line, non-appropriate reserves that that in this, in the central staff analysis, we include as future costs because they are essentially amounts held for future cost items, but they're held below the line because they're sometimes not fully formed or, you know, include some legal or contractual nature that is is not ripe to be included in the budget, in the adopted budget. So so those two elements really are what is leading to this this increase in expenditures in in future years. And in twenty twenty-two, the cost growth is higher. But that's because of adopted legislation. And and frankly, if you look at the the sizable differences between the twenty twenty-two bar and the twenty twenty-three bar, a lot of that is one-time stuff dealing with carryforwards. So in prior presentations to committee, we talked about the automatic carryforwards, the legislative carryforwards, things of that nature that are essentially just twenty twenty-one spending that rolls into the next year. So that's that's why that bar is higher. In general, the plan in the baseline level includes growth in all years from twenty twenty-two and forward. So I just want to point that out, particularly for the viewing public who who may not be exactly tuned in to all the elements of the budget changes that we've discussed in committee this year. So if we can move to this slide. So this is the kind of the more tabular format of the financial plan. It shows in the top line, the starting balance for each year and then runs through revenue changes, expenditures to get to the operating surplus deficit. So so this blue row in the center here is essentially the 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 operating gap that that we showed in the in the the line, the line chart in a prior slide. Then you get to an ending budgetary fund balance. There are some planning reserves that are held below the line to to accommodate those those kind of planning elements that are not yet included in the appropriation. And then you get to the bottom line, the ending unreserved fund balance. So a lot of detail on this chart, but the key takeaway is that the operating surplus deficit is higher than was originally projected in May. And then the ending unreserved fund balance, which is the metric that determines a balanced budget, is is actually somewhat high, somewhat better in twenty twenty-three, largely because there are balances carried over from the current year in the projection. But but on balance, it it generally leads to a a growing negative unreserved fund balance by twenty twenty-six. So so this is the sort of the the table form to look at this data. And then again, we can go through in the next couple of slides, the graphs. So this is updating those graph presentations of the May data using now the new information to show you the projected operating gap for August. So as you can see, compared to the the May graph, the average operating gap has grown. So it's about on average a hundred and forty-two million dollars in each year. And then notably, the the how in the May plan, those two lines were getting closer in by twenty twenty-six. Now largely due to kind of lower revenue projections in the future, combined with the the increased cost for human services contract inflation that's required per code and and planning reserve assumptions. The lines are fairly consistent, diverged about a hundred and forty-two million dollars between the two. So so that's just basically saying that the fiscal sustainability of the general fund has has deteriorated somewhat somewhat the May presentation, given the the recent revenue and expenditure updates. And then the impact on the unreserved ending fund balance is shown on the next slide, which shows essentially the comparison in this bottom line balanced budget indicator comparing the May plan, which is in red, and the August financial plan, the updated numbers, which is in blue. And you can see, actually, in the current year, it's projected to be slightly better. And that's because the the revenue forecast for the current year is higher primarily due to the the twenty twenty-one payroll expense tax liabilities that that were received in twenty twenty-two and are credited to the general fund. So for twenty twenty-three, the projected unreserved ending fund balance improves from negative thirty-five to negative seventeen million. However, that assumes essentially balancing the budget using, starting completely relying on starting balances in twenty twenty-three. Over the long term, given the growing and larger average operating gap, the projected ending unreserved fund balance by by twenty twenty-six goes from negative two forty-nine to negative four hundred and forty-four million dollars. And I just want to make an important note on on this because that's a that's a very large number. And and it's, it can be somewhat frightening when looking at a financial plan that has that size of a number on it. However, this is just the planning document and it will be updated. It'll be updated again in in the fall, and then it'll be updated numerous times before we get to to twenty twenty-six. And furthermore, there is no legal requirement that the out year of the financial plan be balanced. What what is truly required is that the planet that the only thing that is required to be balanced is the legally adopted budget that is being considered by the council. So this financial plan, particularly in the out years, is is a is a planning guide, and it's not, it's not intended to indicate that the council needs to balance a four hundred and forty-four million dollar ending unreserved balance by twenty if projected for twenty twenty-six in this year. So just wanted to add that that context because because of the size of the number and the challenges that it represents, though that it is several years in the future and and it's a useful, it's a useful metric, but it's not the the sole governing metric in this analysis. And if we go to the next slide. So just to refresh, and I I've intentionally tried to go at a fairly fast clip. There is a a backup memo as as Chairman Skata mentioned that includes additional details for this presentation. But I just wanted to refresh on the key takeaways. And that it's basically I lost the chart, this slide. Yeah, so that's essentially that the projected annual operating deficit in the general fund has worsened. The unreserved fund balance has slightly improved in for twenty twenty-three, but over the long term, it's projected to get worse. The magnitude of the challenge increased. And however, there will be some changes, including new revenues, reducing right sizing expenditures and changes to restricted fund policies over both the long short, long term and the temporary basis that we discussed in May. Those those factors will still apply in this, in looking at this plan. Next is that the executive is still looking at decisions around balancing their proposed balanced budget, which will result in plans and changes to this financial plan. And that will be transmitted to the proposed budget, transmitted with the proposed budget. And staff will do this recurring analysis based on that data. And then at a high level, it's both the mayor and council are faced with with this challenge. And given increasing costs in core services and 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 risk and the higher risk of further declines in city revenues. And so this is just the starting point with that that puts us in a good position for considering those different options that will be considered in the coming months. And that concludes my comments. I believe I am turning it over to Director Dingly for some additional slides.
Thank you, Tom.
Great, thank you.
Welcome, Director Dingly.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Tom. First, I want to start by saying thank you. First, thank you for having me here today, but I also a deep appreciation and gratitude for the partnership with central staff and with the chair. I have been very encouraged by this relationship and I I think it's really great that we've been able to translate really technical information into hopefully more accessible terms for folks and deepen people's understanding of why we are in this position and where do we go from here. So I'm transitioning to what I came here to just sort of emphasize a lot of what has been said today. But, you know, from a technical perspective, CBO, the City Budget Office now has the inputs we need to produce and deliver the mayor's twenty-three, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four proposed budget. However, we are obviously closely monitoring the forecast and available revenues. So as a reminder that, of course, in conjunction with the aforementioned partners, we are looking at every labor, every lever available to balancing this budget. This includes reviewing vacant positions and underspend in general, asking each city department to identify areas for reductions, looking at areas where there are increased cost pressures to deliver core services and meet the needs of the community, exploring progressive revenue options through an upcoming task force in partnership with Chairman Skata. Of course, those are longer-term solutions that are not available to us in the near term to help close this gap or bend that curve. And then, of course, not listed here because of an author error, which is my own. Examining general fund adjacent revenue streams for additional flexibility, and those are areas like short-term rental tax, sweet beverage, jumpstart payroll tax, things that we've discussed previously. I've also been able to meet with most of you in the last few weeks, council members, to talk about the structural challenges that we collectively face and address council member priorities for this budget and beyond. And I think I'm happy to report that the good news is I have heard broad agreement and alignment between council members and then between the council and the mayor as a whole. And those priorities, and I don't think I'm telling tales out of school to share that those priorities include continuing to provide existing services while avoiding layoffs in the city family, focusing on our most vulnerable community members, especially particularly recovering from the pandemic and the resulting economic conditions, and then continued investment in housing, addressing homelessness and public safety. So now that we have those inputs, now we're looking at the challenges to meet. So if we can go back just one slide, please, thank you. So now we need to still determine what the number is that we'll collectively budget to for twenty twenty-three. And as you heard from central staff and Director Noble previously, there is still significant certainty about the forecast and available revenues. So I'm going to run through these challenges that we're grappling with as we're looking to to come up with our proposed budget for twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So as we heard, pandemic-related behaviors are continuing to negatively affect city revenues. And now general economic conditions might lead to slow, to slowing revenue growth in an ongoing way. Forecasters, I do not envy the work of Director Noble and Dave Henness. They face extremely mixed signals currently and consequently are uncertain, you know, obviously between that baseline and pessimistic They face extremely mixed signals currently and consequently are uncertain, you know, obviously between that baseline and pessimistic forecast of what will happen to economic growth over the next biennium. So we are really going to be in a situation where we're living forecast to forecast until direction becomes clear, which suggests to Councilmember Herbold's earlier point during Director Noble's presentation that perhaps budget planning reserves might be appropriate to be managing that uncertainty. You know, you heard from Tom that we've refilled significant reserves, but we'll be looking for areas to be conservative throughout the budget to hedge against um that potential downside risk. Further, year-over-year CPI growth has exceeded five percent since June of two thousand and twenty-one, affecting both city revenues and expenditures. And the forecast is suggesting that it will take twelve to eighteen months to fall back into the two to three percent range. Can go to the next slide, please. So again, this is a little bit of, uh, it bears repeating, so just bear with me here that rising prices boost percentage-based taxes such as sales tax, but there are city revenues, as you heard from Director Noble, that do not automatically move with price changes like property taxes, even as high general price inflation puts continuous pressure on buying power and budgets for wages and commodities. Ultimately, that high, high inflation conditions will result in those structural deficits in the general fund and other funds, even as we contend with existing balancing challenges. So our buying power is going to go down. And of course, new progressive revenue options, as I mentioned previously, are not readily available. Those are longer term strategies. So this updated financial plan that you, uh, saw from Tom is the starting point, but it also doesn't assume growth outside of expenses in the baseline. And it also assumes no continuation of one-time items from two thousand and twenty-two, of which there were many. And then, of course, an ongoing challenge is that we have open, uh, labor contracts for a significant number of our city unions and those negotiations are ongoing. So ultimately, the end of the day, this forecast is not significantly mitigated, has not significantly mitigated the challenge we have all discussed and acknowledged, but I do hope to engage with all of you more in the coming weeks as we craft the mayor's twenty-three and twenty-four proposed budget so that we can collectively meet our goals in an environment with admittedly extremely challenging circumstances. So I will turn it back to Deputy Director Pinucci and Tom to close us out with some next steps. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Director Dingly. Uh, so just, I just kind of, um, to roll, uh, finish this up. Um, the mayor will promote, uh, submit his proposed twenty-three, um, twenty-four budget on September twenty-seventh, which will include um, you know, policy proposals on top of the baseline numbers that we reviewed today. Um, and the council, of course, will then consider that proposal and make changes um to adopt a balanced budget for two thousand and twenty-three and then endorse a balanced budget for twenty-four um with a date targeted for November twenty-second. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, this is the final review of this information prior to receiving the budget. Um, there will also be, um, during the council's budget deliberative process, there will be a, a final revenue forecast from both CBO and the Office of Economic Revenue forecasts that we will receive in November, um, which will, you know, continually continue to keep the pulse on what's happening in the economy. Um, and then, um, and then finally, this is just an assurance that using this framework that we started in May and are continuing today, we will, um, central staff will continue to, um, to provide how the budget proposals that are being considered have an impact on the financial planning projections um at each stage in the process. Um, so, so that concludes our presentation and available to to help with any questions that committee may have.
Okay, colleagues, I do want to tee up a few items as well that I think are a follow-up to this presentation before getting into uh more of a discussion or questions. Um, I think hopefully this will help round out our discussion about where do we go from here? Uh, as the budget chair faced with these significant budget deficits, as you've heard, we've been in deep conversation with central staff and really appreciate the collaboration with the City Budgets Office. But after we received the news on Monday last week from the Office of Economic and Revenue Forecast, I have asked central staff to work, uh, to calculate a scenario in which we are able to fully preserve the commitments of the two thousand and twenty jumpstart spend plan as codified in statutes with the amounts assumed in two thousand and twenty, based on the revenue that we understood to be available. We want to maintain the amounts and the spending categories as directed in the jumpstart spend plan. For example, that would still allow for us to see a near forty-two percent increase in the investments in the spend plan as codified by this council as it related to jumpstart spending. That's a forty-two percent increase for things like affordable housing, Green New Deal, equitable investment, equitable recovery. These are our commitments that we made to a broad coalition, and it's the commitments that we as council members uni-universally, unanimously approved and codified into statute. The ability to, uh, move forward with those commens- commitments is something that I, um, really want to be able to stand by. As we also recognize, there are some potential short-term solutions for two thousand and twenty-two, uh, two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four that could use the balance of the jumpstart revenues that are projected to come in above the levels estimated from two thousand and twenty-two and use that difference to help us address the general fund current deficit in the short term, just for those two years, to prevent significant reductions in city services. And I would also say that when we as a council passed Jumpstart in two thousand and twenty, we had intended for Jumpstart to also help prevent against austerity at the beginning of the pandemic. So it is very much in line with the commitment to making sure that we protect significant, um, and critical city services as well as moving forward with the commitment that we codified and statute in two thousand and twenty that would allow for us in two thousand and twenty-two and beyond to make sure that there was direct investments to the categories as directed in our spend plan. As everyone knows, as we've talked about this budget situation over the last eight months, uh, thanks in large part to the transparency that, um, has been made available because central staff took the directive from two years ago to dig into the footnote that was included in the last two years projections and really daylight the six-year financial plan. We began having a conversation in, um, a collaborative way with our new director of the City Budgets Office, Julie Dingly, with central staff at the table, starting this year to say, how do we collectively as a city family address this shortfall that was buried in, I think, page seven hundred and something and then page six hundred and something in our last two budgets? And bring that to the forefront so that we collectively could address the underspend, um, that had been used chronically to fill in future year's budget. As I've said repeatedly, since we began this conversation this year, that Jumpstart Progressive Revenue could not be the only solution to addressing the potential shortfall that was identified in the six-year fiscal plan outlook. I have asked central staff at this point to go forth with helping us as a council and in collaboration with the City Budgets Office and the executive look at this scenario that would allow for the modest estimates from the two thousand and twenty-two underspend to be built into the baseline expenditures, assume very little growth in new expenditures in two thousand and twenty-three. That will help hold our budget steady, but to address, um, the shortfall that we will face in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, as I noted, stay true to the two thousand and twenty spend plan as codified, uh, in Jumpstart's, um, uh, expenditure plan. Stay true to those amounts and use that difference, the higher-than-anticipated dollar amounts, to help us with the general fund underspend. This is very much in line with what this committee has looked, has asked for in the past to look at general fund revenue adjacent revenue streams. Um, but it is, even those additional revenue streams are not significant enough in the near term to help us close this gap. So this short-term solution that I'm suggesting, and I will ask central staff in a moment to walk us through this scenario for our council colleagues here. This short-term solution with very clear sideboards to only be used for two years and to maintain our commitments to the Jumpstart Spend Plan as codified in statute with the amounts that we assumed in two thousand and twenty. This would need to be coupled with those longer-term strategies that Director Dingly noted. Investing in progressive revenue sources that would be available to us starting for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six budget cycles. So that would mean revenue would need to be implemented and we would need to start collecting in two thousand and twenty-four. And I'm very excited that in partnership with the mayor's office, we are continuing to move forward with establishing a progressive revenue, uh, work group that will be able to identify solutions for us throughout next year that I hope will be able to be implemented in two thousand and twenty-four that would allow for the longer-term stability. The Seattle Revenue Stability Work Group, for example, as a name, could then be used in two thousand and twenty-five and beyond so that this short-term approach to Jumpstart's higher-than-anticipated revenue would be very short-term in nature. The second thing is, we want to continue to seek state and, and federal funds, county partnership in every place possible. And we are continually inspired by the, um, progressive revenue options and policies that are coming from Congress right now. This follows up on American Rescue Plan, the, um, coronavirus local relief funds, the bipartisan infrastructure bill, and now the Inflation Adjustment Act. We are going to continue to see possible revenue streams coming to our state, our region, and we want to work in partnership with those state, county, and federal partners to bring in additional revenue to offset where the city may have stepped up, where dollars were not available from those partners in the past. And third, as you heard it, as you heard Director Dingly note in this meeting and in previous meeting, there are systemic issues that the City Budgets Office is committed to addressing to make sure that we're improving our baseline budget assumptions so that every year we do not have dollars going to departments for positions that are vacant. We cannot rely on using underspend from one calendar year to be paid forward to the next, um, calendar year's budget that is not sustainable budgeting. And Director Dingly has really taken that issue head-on and is working on policies to address that in the city, uh, so that each department has real-time budgeting information going forward after this year. So I appreciate that. And colleagues, lastly, I'd like to signal that the scenario that I'm asking the city, um, central staff to walk through is a policy path that we're exploring again, exploring for the two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four budget shortfall only. It is short-term, one-time solution in nature, allowing for us to maintain our spending as, um, originally intended in the two thousand and twenty spend plan as codified and allows for us to maintain the full amounts assumed into those categories. It still allows for an increase of forty-two percent, for example, um, in housing, and it does not rely only on Jumpstart to solve this systemic issue and allows for us to build in progressive revenue in the future. And if we overrelied frankly on Jumpstart now, we would have an unstable budget, unsustainable budget if the revenue forecast continued to decrease in the November forecast that we will receive this year or in future years. So this is not only the smart thing to do to be able to maintain the integrity of Jumpstart, Jumpstart, to be able to ward off austerity, to be able to make the investments and to literally jump-starting our economy in housing, Green New Deal, equitable development, and equitable recovery. But it also allows for us to move forward with, um, investments in our core city services and, and, um, vulnerable populations that Jumpstart initially intend, initially intended to protect as well by preventing against austerity. So as you know, I don't do anything, um, out here on the dais in development, um, on policy without talking to key stakeholders, and we had a, a large number of organizations that were part of building the tax proposal in Jumpstart along with my council colleagues who co-sponsored the legislation. Um, I have, uh, reached back out to some of those stakeholders, uh, that were part of our initial conceptual, uh, tax discussion and talked about the opportunity to maintain the two thousand and twenty spend plan as codified into statute, short-term solution for the next two years, reliance on progressive revenue going forward, and clear sideboards on how, um, Jumpstart's uh, uh, um, integrity would be maintained. And I really appreciate that I've received a positive message back from the Washington State Budget and Policy Center, Working Washington, three fifty Seattle, the Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness, SEIU nine-two-five, Teamsters one seventeen, and a number of individuals who are still having conversations in community, but very much strongly support the approach of maintaining Jumpstart's integrity. They wrote me a comment that said, um, we worked tirelessly in two thousand and twenty with the council member Moskata and other colleagues sponsoring Jumpstart to build this robust, robust community support for progressive revenue to address the challenges during COVID, but also the chronic need for more progressive funding. We developed the spend plan in consultation with community, business, or, and nonprofit organizations and service providers and residents of Seattle. And they said, given that Jumpstart is projected to raise above what was estimated in two thousand and twenty, we support the requests made of central staff, um, for central staff to look at temporarily, um, a, a scenario that allows for us to temporarily address the Seattle budget shortfall in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four only with excess Jumpstart revenue going to core government services to create a more equitable Seattle. They said, let's be clear. This means we want the full promise of funding and the commitments as outlined in the spending categories to be maintained and adhered to as envisioned in two thousand and twenty. It's unacceptable that communities have waited for affordable housing, climate investments for so long, and we recognize that Jumpstart's higher-than-anticipated returns and its success is a way to temporarily support existing programs while maintaining the commitment that Jumpstart originally envisioned for its spend plan as codified. So I really appreciate there, those, um, the support from some of the folks who are core to developing the the spend plan, and we will maintain the integrity of that spend plan while looking at ways to provide some initial relief to, um, the budget. Uh, Councilmember Herbold, I believe there's just three slides. If central staff could walk through those briefly and then we could take all questions together. Okay, central staff, please go ahead and walk us through those initial slides to outline that scenario that I just commented on.
Just going to share my screen again and try to leave it on the screen this time. Um, so thank you for that introduction. As Chairman Moskata described, um, we were asked to prepare a scenario that avoids austerity and preserves the commitments made in two thousand and twenty and affirmed, affirmed in two thousand and twenty-one by the council on the, on how the Jumpstart tax revenues should be allocated. So what we prepared, um, for your consideration today, um, as guidance for the executive and Director Dingly as they prepare the proposed budget and consider the decisions ahead is a proposal that would, um, allow some amount of Jumpstart Fund to continue to provide continuity of city services in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. And the amount would be calculated based on taking the revenue estimates we were using when developing the two thousand and twenty spending plan for Jumpstart and then comparing that to the current forecast. The difference between those numbers would be the maximum amount of Jumpstart revenue that could be transferred to the general fund um to maintain, uh, city services. Um, it's, it would be a short-term allo- allowance, and it would be, um, important in this proposal that the policies are crafted in a way that would only allow that transfer if general fund revenues are, continue to be projected to be less than expected or excuse me, projected expenditures, and then also require that as we get future revenue updates, if conditions improve and general fund in the current year um forecasts improve, that the Jumpstart Fund would be paid back first prior to authorizing, um, additional general fund expenditures. So as shown on this chart, at the time, the Jumpstart Plan, um, Spending Plan and Tax was, uh, authorized by the council in two thousand and twenty, we estimated two hundred and twenty-three million in Jumpstart revenue to spend in two thousand and twenty-three and two hundred and twenty-seven million and twenty-four. Uh, revenues are currently about thirty percent higher, or thirty percent or more higher than original estimates so that this means the city could invest the full amount, the two hundred and twenty, twenty, two hundred and twenty-three million dollars as originally committed in twenty-three and seventy-one million would be transferred to the general fund for two thousand and twenty-three. This next slide is, um, example of how that would play out for the Jumpstart Spending Plan. So as shown on this, in this table, um, in two thousand and twenty-three, you could invest that full two hundred and twenty-three million in Jumpstart Fund categories and transfer seventy-one million to the um, to the general fund. This would allow for a significant increase in the Jumpstart spending categories for two thousand and twenty-three, about almost forty percent or over forty percent, as well as, um, providing that support to the general fund. In addition, you'll see that we're showing some fund balance in this table that is reflecting the amount of Jumpstart revenue that is projected to come in in two thousand and twenty-two that is higher than what we budgeted in the adopt, in the two thousand and twenty-two adopted budget. And per Director Noble's presentation, given some of the, um, uncertainty about, uh, payroll tax revenues and the newness of that tax, um, central staff will be, um, providing some options to create a reserve to ensure some stability in the Jumpstart Fund as well as, um, providing that stability to the general fund. And this final slide shows the full scenario, so the, um, this is, or what it can mean for general fund balancing. So along with the Jumpstart assumptions, we modeled the scenario that included modest assumptions about two thousand and twenty-two underspend of about twenty million dollars. And as this committee has been engaged in conversations, we know that currently, um, the executive is looking for, um, is currently holding certain expenditures in two thousand and twenty-two, understanding the projected shortfall in twenty-three and reserving some of those resources to mitigate any reductions that need to be made to base expenditures. Um, it does also model a modest, um, assumption about certain baseline budget reductions, less than one percent, a half a percent. in 2023 and beyond to help balance the budget and then to address the structural deficit in the out years. Of course, as the chair noted, we would need to rely on other solutions. And we are currently engaged in ongoing conversations with CBO and other executive staff on new progressive revenues as well as really looking at our baseline budget expenditures. And how to reprioritize city spending to meet the most critical needs. So in this table, these three purple rows show the the sort of difference between the the financial plan that Tom described and how this scenario would affect it. So the first line shows that 20 million dollar underspend in 2022 and then the assumption about a half a percent baseline reduction in expenditures. It shows a maximum transfer from the Jumpstart Fund to the general fund of 71 million and 23 and 84 million in 24. And it assumes that some new spending will have to occur in 23. This could be spread out over 23 and 24. Acknowledging that there are going to be some cost increases that are unavoidable, that are not yet reflected in the baseline budget. And again, this is just a scenario. We don't have complete information. The budget office is still working through proposals from departments and decisions from the mayor. But as shown in this scenario, this would mean that the Jumpstart Fund could maintain those 2020 commitments, contribute to the general fund picture and show a balanced budget at the end of 2024. And it would improve the conditions for 2026. And as Tom noted in his presentation, it is not required that the financial plans show a balanced budget in the out years. It's just important that we continue working together to identify longer term strategies so we don't continue to face this deficit and then coming up with one time solutions year over year. And with that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Okay, great. So I thanks for sharing. And I think you can take down those numbers because it's all still in development. And one big caveat that I would note is we still want to see what the impact of the inflationary adjustment would be. So that is a critical piece in plugging into these these final scenario slides here. But with that, it is one way for us to signal that I think that we are all interested in avoiding austerity, maintaining the integrity of Jumpstart and continuing to look at these longer term solutions. Councilmember Herbl, you have been very patient, so I will turn it over to you.
Thanks. I appreciate learning about your your proposal, Madam Chair. I do have just two quick questions about the prior presentation, but before I move to them, I do want to take this opportunity to signal my support for providing some flexibility for 2023 and 2024 only use some portion of revenue that comes in over expectations to sustain idle city functions that we can continue to do non-austerity budgeting. We always have to be cognizant to put boundaries on this approach. We're facing a long term structural problem that must be served new progressive revenue so that we don't have an over reliance on revenue that we've already expressed a commitment for to fuel significant new investments in affordable housing. And I'm hoping that letter that you referenced, Madam Chair, is in is in all of our inboxes. And if not, if you don't mind sending it, that'd be great. Um, two quick questions, one about slide nine and the other about slide eight. And I'm sorry, I know I asked this question in my my thing, this committee meeting, but I just want to confirm again for myself and for the viewing public. The starting balance, well, I guess I should say the 2022 operating surplus and the 2023 projected starting balance on slide nine, it's my recollection that neither of these numbers include underspend nor any of the planned spending holds from 2022. And I just, I know as it relates to underspend, we rarely get that information until we get the budget, but the reporting on the projected revenues, I think SPAR has not talked a lot about the work that the council has been doing with CBO to do some planned spending holds from from 20 for 2022. And what what that does is it by holding some spending for 2022 that allows us both to reduce the baseline for 2023 as well as to carry over more funds from from 2022. And so just want to for myself and for the public record, just know whether or not this chart on slide nine reflects that.
Thanks for the question, I fear herbal. So the these numbers do not include any assumption about underspend in the current year, so 2022's budget, neither from from natural underspend or from some spending holds that are currently in place. With regards to the impact of that in future years, my my initial assumption would be that those items are only being held on a one time basis. And if there are any ongoing implications of that, they would not be built into the baseline. So so if there's a spending hold on something that we would normally consider one time are ongoing. In the future years, we are, we are considering that as as fully part of the projection and growing in future years. But I don't know the detail on specifically what those holds are, so I can't answer any further.
When you say future years, you mean beyond 2023. They are, they are. We are sort of behind the scenes considering them, but not reflected here for for 2023.
Correct. Yeah, Councilmember Herbl, if I might just add in, if we assumed that for 2022, if we assumed we reduced expenditures by 20 million dollars, you would show 23 is slightly in the in the black in this scenario, but it wouldn't improve the the out years as Tom described for any ongoing expenditures. I will just note that there are still 2022 issues that the budget office is hearing about from departments with some increased costs. And so there are a lot of moving pieces, which is why they are not yet projecting that those that sort of underspend in the expenditure information they've given to us. And Director Dingley, please correct me if I'm wrong there. And also but which is why we included the 20 million dollar assumption in Council Chair Musketa's scenario that based on, you know, previous years underspending may be a bit conservative, it may, but it is hard to predict that now. And so we are trying to show a conservative estimate that shows you could balance and as Director Dingley and the executive team collect more information from departments in the next couple of weeks to finalize the budget. It is, I am assuming that the proposed budget will likely have some underspend assumption unless they decide to release the holds on any of that that spending.
Super helpful. Thank you. And my second question. Just real quick on that one, Director Dingley, did you have something you wanted to add to the council members question?
I just wanted to confirm what Ally said. We are, we're, we're in the midst of a lot of these decisions. And so we're learning a lot about what what updating this plan looks like at this time of year. And and part of that is imperfect information, frankly. And so we still just, we don't have enough information to project out for 2022 just yet. But yeah, just putting an exclamation point on Ally's comments.
And I completely understand that about the sort of the natural underspend and new things that have been arisen. I've just, I'm just sort of expressing an interest in sort of more transparency around around the holds. You know, again, we've made some tough decisions together this year about those holds. And the when there is it's reporting on these on these financial plans. And it it focuses on 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 the deficit, which is an important thing that we have to wrestle with, not just for this year, but for the long term without reflecting that difficult work that we that we did this year to to not stand in the way of the executive holding almost 20 million dollars in 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 spending that the council planned. I I just, it makes me want to make sure that that is also reflected in in this in this planning work. Again, I understand that there's definitely more to more to come. My second question, it might be another example of me beating the proverbial dead horse on slide 14, the vacant position exercise. Really appreciate that this work is underway. I have expressed in the past how important it is for us all to get real time insight into positions that are budgeted but not filled and therefore another likely area for underspend. And this is even more more important, I think, during the the great resignation where it's more difficult to to fill funded positions. I understand the picture that we that we have here is is not quite as clear as we have aspirationally expressed our hopes for in that by design, we want to keep some positions that are that are vacant but funded. We want to hold them. We don't want to, but it's again, but we still want, we still want the information about them because without without suggesting we want to cut them because we do recognize that the funding in some of these positions is necessary to support more than average workforce in a particular division. But I just want to express my my hope that having more information about vacant positions will be forthcoming because it's really valuable to council as we begin our deliberations on budget. And just wondering if you could say more about your insights or information that you expect be available as it relates to the review of vacant positions. And our efforts bring the budget conversation instead of what the next step that will not will need to be taken to make this information more accessible. Thanks.
Absolutely. If I might, is it all right, Chair, if I jump in to respond?
Please go ahead.
Great, thank you. Those are, they're great. They're the right questions, Councilmember Purple. Thank you very much for them. I would say a couple of things. First, we have a full position by position review underway with the departments. So they are providing us context on why those vacancies exist and what the plan is going forward for those positions. I would say holds on positions and holding vacancy assumptions is really tricky from a budgeting perspective. It's a great sort of one time or near term tool, but unless it's coupled with a conversation around actually changing the lines of business and expectations around what a department is doing in service to the community. It's not, it's not something that can be done sustainably in an ongoing way. So it's it's definitely something that we are absolutely using through this proposed but upcoming proposed budget. That's not telling tales out of school. I think you would be surprised if I wasn't using that as a tool. But it's, it is really important that we that we keep an eye toward our expectations around service delivery overall. So that's one piece. The other piece I would say is that you know, vacancies isn't the only story. We are, have been working really closely with the the city finance division on tools to enhance monitoring across departments. So we have now with the introduction with our new finance, well, I guess it's newish financial management system. It's about four years old. But with the pandemic, it still feels new. We have a lot more data now than we've ever had access to in terms of more like closer to real time department spending. And so rolling out monitoring tools to help build that accountability and frankly, active management of resource for departments so that they have a resource to use that's easy for anyone at any level of financial literacy throughout the organization, managers, all the way up to executives to be able to track how they're doing in real time. And we can have those accountability conversations with finance and budget with the departments together to say, hey, this looks, this pattern doesn't match our expectations. What's going on here? And provide some some more information sooner so that we're in less of a reactive posture. That's the goal. That's all, that's a big time change management effort. So it's going to take us time to get there. And but I wanted to, you know, share that we are putting the tools in place now and starting those trainings throughout the city so that we can start that utilization, then start robust monitoring moving forward. And hopefully the goal is over time. As you heard from central staff, we're going to write the ship. It's just going to, it is going to take us some time to get there. But you know, appreciate the grace and patience that everyone has shown and and the support frankly for rolling out those tools.
Like Tom has an answer as well. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am just to just to kind of build on Director Dingley's response and to provide some insight for the committee. This is the vacancy question is important to the central staff analysis. And one of the budget questions that we are envisioning at this point in time is something that compares the cost of supporting the currently filled positions with the budget amount. So it's kind of approaching the vacancy question from a slightly different angle. So it's basically saying, how much do you need to pay for the positions you have filled? What is the budget and what's the difference? And in some cases, there may be actually insufficient budget to support the currently filled positions. But in other cases, that will be the other way. There will be more budget authority than is required to to support those currently filled positions. So this slightly different tact. So hopefully the dual efforts will will provide the the right level of information for council's decisions this fall.
Thank you both. Appreciate that.
Yeah, and I'll also underscore that that's been a constant point of conversation as well for me. Recognizing that we continue to put additional money into positions that are not filled and then that money rolls over. So looking forward to working with all of you as we continue to address this, please, please note that the caveat along with the scenario that we outlined was just to provide some assurance that we are looking at how that would impact our existing plans to Jumpstart Progressive Revenue Spend Plan and wanting to first maintain the investments as codified in 2020 in terms of amounts and spending categories. So that's the, that is the the thing that I really wanted folks to see. That those investments are maintained and that there is going to be the potential if the scenario does continue to get analyzed for us to use a higher than anticipated returns, only that amount for only two years to then help with preventing austerity. Much more analysis is needed though to continue to look at the impact of inflation, for example, and some other issues that we may want to factor in. So please note the asterisks next to this conversation that we had, which is much more work is to be done. But I wanted to let folks know in a transparent way in partnership with many of the stakeholders from Jumpstart Progressive Revenue Coalition that there is a shared interest in both preserving the spend plan and preventing against austerity in the very short term. So more work to be done on that with the asterix there that there's a lot of analysis still to be done. Any additional comments on this? We are over 1:00 PM. So I want to thank you for your shared interest in in the questions and the presentations today. Our next committee meeting will be September 7th at 9:30 AM. We have a relatively short agenda, the Yes, Sir, Terrorist, Moratorium, excuse me, Memorandum of Agreements and Modification. The Green New Deal Jumpstart Appropriations for us to consider. This is the recommendation from the Green New Deal Advisory Board on how they would like their unspecified dollars to be dedicated and look forward to codifying their recommendation. And then because we weren't able to get to the quarterly Seattle Rescue Plan spending update, we will have that as the last item on our agenda for September 7th. With that, great to see you all. Enjoy the rest of your afternoon. Today's meeting is adjourned.